Good afternoon. Welcome to the August 9, 2018 meeting of the City of Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Pleasure to have you here today. You're gonna love those benches. But if you'd like to speak with us, we appreciate if you get a sign-up form from out front and then deliver it to our secretary out front here. Get the sign-up forms outside. You can deliver them to our secretary out here. I would ask that you keep your comments directed to the commission. Keep them brief, direct, to the point. If a particular point has been made, please don't make it again. Unless you've got something really important that's different. There's a lot of folks here today. We want to keep the meeting moving. We've got a pretty substantial docket. So, please silence your cellphones, if you would, so we don't have any interruptions. I'll do it soon. And with that, we'll go ahead and move into our agenda. First item is the minutes of the July 12 meeting.
Motion to receive the minutes.
Motion to receive the minutes of the July 12 meeting. Cast your votes. One, two, three, four. Well... Is that right? Yeah, okay. All right. You want to go?
Next agenda item is continuance requests. And the first batch, I'll read our uncontested requests for continuance. This group is requesting to defer until August 23rd. Would be item B-35 for case C-7D-13, item B-36 for CPA-2, item B-37 for PUD-1687, item 38 for C-6996, and item 39 on the agenda for PUD-1686. We also have two requesting to be deferred to September 13th. That's item B-40 for PUD-1670, item B-41 for case SPUD-1064. And the following three have been withdrawn. That's B-42 on the agenda for CE-956, item B-43 for ED-221, and item B-44 for case ABC-933.
Is there anybody here to speak to us on any of these continuances that were just read? Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to continue the items as read. Second?
Motion is second to continue the uncontested requests for continuance. Cast your votes. Those are approved.
We also received three new requests for continuance. Item B-11 on the agenda for case CE-975, defer to August 23rd. Item B-14 for case SPUD-1074, defer to August 23rd. And item B-17 for case C-7008, also August 23rd.
Anybody here to speak to us on items 11, 14, and 17, the new requests for continuances? Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to continue the items as read.
Motion is second to continue items 11, 14, and 17. Cast your votes. Those are approved. Any additional requests for continuance from the public before we go into the rest of our docket? All right.
Moving on to the consent docket, there were 10 items on the consent docket, and I'll read each of the case numbers in for the record. Item 1 is PUD, SP-69. Item 2 is case C-7004. Item 3 is case C-7016. Item 4 is case C-7011. Item 5 is C-7014. Item 6 is C-7015. Item 7 is PC-10-538. Item 8 is PC-10-539. Item 9 is PC-10-540. And item 10 is CE-976.
Commissioners, any questions on the comments on the consent docket? Anybody have any comments on that?
I did see one consent item that had a letter of opposition.
Which one was that?
I think it was number 9. Yeah.
Is anybody here on item number 9? Let's do this while you're coming. Go ahead and come on up. Let's approve the consent docket separate. We'll leave item 9 and we'll take it as first public hearing, okay?
Make a motion to approve the items on the consent docket excluding item number 9, case PC-PC-10540. Second?
Motion is second to approve the consent docket, omitting item 9. Cast your votes. Those items are approved. Okay, I guess item 9, over.
That is the item you're here for, right?
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and hear item 9 out of order for PC-10-540. This is an application to rezone 3427 Northwest 50th Street from R1 Single Family to O1 Office District.
Is the applicant here on this? Are you in protest, ma'am?
No, I'm actually representing the buyer of this property.
So you're in favor of this?
Yeah, I'm in favor of this.
Okay, you don't need to say anything. Commissioners, I think this should have been included on the consent docket. So is there any questions or comments on this one?
There's no objection. I'll make a motion to approve, I guess it'd be recommend approval for PC-10540. Second?
Motion is second to approve item 9. Cast your votes. That item is approved. Good job.
Okay, moving on to items requiring separate vote. We have...
Yeah. Since we have a short docket today, there are several cases on the docket that have variances, and so, which require six commissioners, and we may not have six commissioners later on in our meeting. So, we're gonna take the cases out of order that have variances on them, so we can make sure we get those disposed of, and then we'll move back through the regular order of the docket.
So, on the agenda, we're gonna move up items 20, 22, 30, 31, and 32. And we'll hear them in that order, then move to the regular order. So item 20 is C-7010, the final plat of Mulholland Industrial. It requires a variance to section 5.3.2 of the subregs.
Good afternoon, Mr. General members of the commission. My name is Dwight Butler with Anchor Engineering for the applicant. The reason we're requesting the variance for the extension of the cul-de-sac is due to the flood zone. That is not shown on the exhibit, but it comes well into track number 2, and we just don't have room to put a looping road.
Okay. So have you engineered around the length of your cul-de-sac, Dwight? Do you have adequate turn radius and everything for trucks and stuff?
Yes, sir.
Trucks that come in? And then 8 and 9 take access back off of this western entrance from Reno, is that right?
They have their own entries from Reno.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, any questions or comments on this application? Is there anybody here to discuss item number 20? Got a variance to TE number 2.
There's no other discussion. I'll make a motion to approve the variance to section 5.3.2 of the subdivision regulations for case C-7010.
I second the motion.
Motion is second to approve the variance to TE number 2. Cast your votes. variance is approved.
Make a motion to approve the final plat for C-7010.
I second the motion.
Motion is second to approve the application for item number 20. Cast your votes. That item is approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 22 is a variance, V-17, to Article 3, Sections 5.7.3B and 5.8.1A of the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson with Johnson &amp; Associates here on behalf of the applicant. You've seen this case before. It's been here several times in its current form, and prior to that, it was rezoned. Upon the rezoning approval, the applicant was not aware that when he would split this to allow two homes, that there would be a requirement per the subdivision regulations to extend an 8-inch public sewer to serve that one house. So then the lot split was recommended to go to Planning Commission. Couldn't be done administratively, and several iterations have gone back and forth between the client, myself, and the city staff. We came up with some new easement language that would give the city staff a little bit of more comfort than a standard private easement form, requiring the easements to be recorded as part of the deed, and also putting the property seller and buyer on notice that they have a private sewer service running across their property. The length of the service is not unusual. Most of us live in a house that has an 80 to 100-foot-long service. That's about what you're gonna see here. So the cost of running the 8-inch public line was very expensive, and this is a good alternative to allow for this infill to work. And so with that, the client is requesting, there are no TEs. The client is requesting the variance, as spelled out by Mr. McDermott.
So, just as a process, we approve the variance in the application, or is approving the variance approval of the application? We'll do both?
I think...
I guess we could just approve of the application.
Approving the application would be the variance.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
Sure, to be clear, the easement language in this case is acceptable to the city to allow us not to have to do the panhandle type...
In this case, that's correct.
Lot that we've done elsewhere. Okay, so that's, so there is language that the city is happy with that gets that done.
And I'm gonna qualify that, that in this case, that's correct, because we worked specifically to put the language together.
Which just seems like a valuable tool for the future.
And I think this is a good in-between point to, before the subregs are revised, and hopefully in the revision of the subregs, there will be some, like, limits of the service line. If it's over 300 feet, you gotta extend, just as an example, so.
We're gonna take these variances one at a time, first motion's go?
Approve the application.
Okay.
Because the application is the variance.
Okay. Well, if there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the variances to Articles 3, Section 5.7.3B and 5.8.1A for V-17. Second?
Okay. Motion is second to approve item number 22. Variance is there in. Cast your votes.
Thank you so much.
Approved. Thank you, Tim. Glad to see this get off the docket.
The next three items are related to each other, so we have to hear them in this order. Item number 30 is CPA-201804. This is a request to change the land use typology area designation in the comprehensive plan from urban reserve to urban low intensity. This is in an area south of southwest 89th Street between county line and Morgan Road. And Susan Atkinson from the planning department is going to do the comprehensive plan analysis presentation.
Good afternoon. Again, this is CPA item 20180001. Next slide. The request is to amend the comprehensive land use plan to remove the urban reserve designation from the base urban low designation in an area of southwest quadrant of Oklahoma City, right on the Mustang city limit. This has, sorry, this has an associated PUD application that will be considered next. Next slide. Our recommendation is that you deny the application to remove urban reserve for the following reasons. There is a lack of urban services to support the urban density proposed in the application. The prevailing development pattern in the area is 5 acres or larger. Conditions behind the urban reserve designation have not changed, and lifting the urban reserve is not appropriate until the city can efficiently serve the area with the full complement of services. Next slide. This is a slide that shows you the subject site in the city as a whole. And we'll talk a little bit about existing conditions. The subject site's LUDA, or land use typology area, is urban reserve again with a base designation of urban low. The surrounding area is largely also urban reserve or agricultural land, as you can see in the slide. Next slide. The development patterns in the area are largely undeveloped. There is some rural residential to the south. Again, this slide describes the prevailing development pattern in terms of lot sizes. As you can see, abutting the site to the south, there is some larger lot residential development, but largely what you find in the area is large estate or agricultural parcels. This is a picture of the surrounding zoning. There is not an environmentally sensitive area designated on this site. However, there are two streams that flow southwesterly on the site, and then you can see about a half-mile to the south, there are some, there is some ESA designation. With regard to existing services, there is a 16-inch city main located around 300 feet to the east edge of the site. This proposed development would be required to tie into city water. With regard to wastewater, the site is located in a sub-basin that is not currently served by sewer, and sewer is not anticipated in this area in the near future. With regard to fire response times, there would be two possibilities. Fire Station 26, which is just above the legend in the lower left, lower right-hand corner of the slide, is at 119th and Rockwell. It's a relatively new station. It's around four miles away from the subject site. There's also an aid agreement with Mustang, whose fire station is around four and a half miles to the west of the subject site. Neither of those fire response times meet the preferred city targets for either urban or rural response times. And again, the site was designated urban reserve at the time that Plan OKC was adopted for the following reasons. It's adjacent to, but within connecting distance of city water. It is outside a wastewater service area at this time. It is beyond the preferred rural response time targets for the City of Oklahoma City Fire Department. And the area represents an opportunity to increase service levels over time that would allow the city to responsibly manage the cost of growth. We can't, we can't do that right now, but we certainly will be able to in time. And then lastly, the prevailing development patterns around the site have rural characteristics. So those are the reasons for the original LUDA designation at the time Plan OKC was adopted. So considerations for changing the LUDA. Again, the subject site was designated urban reserve due to a lack of urban services that could support an urban development density and pattern. This includes city sewer and fire response times. So conditions in the area have not changed since this designation was made. The prevailing development pattern in the area is 5-acre parcels, and lifting the urban reserve layer to allow the site to develop under urban low-intensity LUDA is not appropriate until the time the city can efficiently provide the full complement of urban services to the I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
I had just one, just so I understand exactly. The, it's urban reserve, but it's on top of UL.
That's correct.
Right? So the reserve is layered on top of UL, but it, so it's, you are, because the services aren't available now.
That's correct.
But your point is that when services are available, it would be effectively what the applicant is asking for, right?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Right now?
I guess the only thing I would ask is, on a few of those, well, on the majority of those items, it seems like our main, the city's main hesitation in this area is being responsible with the cost of growth to the city.
That's correct.
Right, okay. Is it not?
Sorry. What would staff's recommendation be if the LUDA being sought was rural low intensity?
I'm gonna defer to the planning director on that question.
We would look at that, I mean, for the same reasons that we would look at a request to go to rural medium intensity. I mean, if it's adjacent to other rural low-intensity areas, it could be re-designated as that. It's just that this area was identified as being proximate to be able to be served in the near future, so it was kind of highlighting the fact that somebody could seek higher densities there in the future.
But how would a rural low-intensity designation change the recommendations or the rationale for the recommendations made by staff here? It still wouldn't be served by fire. It still wouldn't be served by sewer. So how would that be different?
Rural low is typically...
Five acres.
Well, no, it's typically not served by sewer, and it's typically a rural response time for fires. That would be consistent with other rural low-intensity areas.
Okay.
But the density they're proposing doesn't meet the rural low intensity. That's not what they would like to request.
No, understood. I just wanted to better understand, is it the density that's being requested that's driving the recommendation, or is it that we're making a change just because we don't have sewer? Which, I mean, while I respect that, I still take issue with letting a comprehensive plan lead development when there's no certainty as to when an area may ever receive these services. So we're going to forestall development in an area that has, I mean, if it weren't desirable, they wouldn't be here. So how do we strike that balance, and where would the city begin to bend if it were looking at 5-acre tracks? We still have the same problem, but you're saying it would be more likely that it would be recommended for approval than what's presented here.
If 5-acre tracks came in with a request to re-designate as rural low intensity, I think it would be fair to ask that. What the comprehensive plan highlights is portions of the city that are the next round of urban development, that have the potential to develop as urban. Those areas that do develop as urban, the city wants to provide full services, water, sewer, police, and fire to those areas. So as those urban areas start to fade into lower densities in rural areas, that is perfectly fine. So some of these areas, if they never do develop as urban, could seek re-designation as those rural areas that we don't expect to provide full service to. And that is certainly at the applicant's call. But in this case, the applicant was requesting to build higher densities in the area, but not quite to the level that can be served.
Thank you.
And one thing I feel like I want to add is, the comprehensive plan is meant to be comprehensive, and to me, whenever I think about these things, the cities, the city has to make decisions for all of the city in these cases, rather than particular portions of land, in order to, I mean, we're making fiscal decisions, fiscal responsibility decisions, I think, in these cases. That's my hesitation on items like this. Anyway.
Anything else before we get to Mr. Box? He's dying to talk. Okay, David?
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, who is with me, and Brad Reed, who is the civil engineer for the project. I think I'd start by saying that the planning commission is specifically not making fiscal decisions. City council, the governing body, is who makes the fiscal decisions for the city, and makes the decisions on a more comprehensive scale. But to address the comp plan issue, one of the problems we have, specifically to your point, Commissioner Cravens, is the lot size that we seek, the half-acre lot, there is simply no comp plan designation that exists that would support it with the lack of sewer. And so while this side of the podium doesn't believe half-acre lots are a urban high-density development, we believe that is more a rural-style development that is predominant in this area. Even if we came with rural low, the comp plan problem can't solve that half-acre to 1-acre lot count. So specifically to address some of the things said by staff, she mentioned in her presentation that the prevailing or predominant land use pattern in this area is 5-acre lots and greater. So what we've shown you here, our site is designated in red in the upper left-hand corner. What you see here in green are all half-acre developments. What you see in these large swaths of purple are half-acre, 3/4-a-lot, under 1 acre. So in this immediate, and of course, north of our site is Mustang, which is significantly more dense, I would submit that the prevailing development pattern, when it has developed, everything is under 5 acres. These areas you see developed that aren't shaded in a color are 2-acre lot sizes. So one of the problems is, again, there isn't a comp plan designation that matches the common development pattern, a very popular product in this city. I've been here at this podium several times recently on this exact issue, both in Ward 3 and in Ward 4, where the comp plan designation just simply didn't square with the application and a very popular prevailing development pattern in an area. More recently, I don't know how many people currently on the commission were here then, but this right here at 104th, I believe it's just east of Rockwell. There, we sought half-acre to 3/4-acre lots. We were in the same situation in which the comp plan was urban reserve, and therefore staff recommended approval. We had a PUD very similar to this. Again, staff recommended denial. And so we, that was denied, the PUD was denied, and we were forced to go to city council. Ultimately, city council approved that application. Similar situation to what happened in Ward 4, where the comp plan didn't square with what we were seeking to do. Planning commission denied it. Planning commission denied the rezoning application, and we moved on to city council. So what I would tell you is, this is the prevailing development pattern. When lots develop, they typically develop in this part of the city with water, no sewer, at the half-acre to 1-acre lot size. The question about if we came in with 5-acre lots, well, it's already zoned for 5-acre lots. It didn't matter what the comp plan says. We don't have to come before you to get any approval if we wanted to develop for 5-acre lots. The reason we're here is, 5-acre lots has no marketability. There is no economic engine to make that possible for 5-acre lots. And so when we talk about urban reserve, what we're really talking about is, there's some point in the future that staff cannot identify when services might be there. But what we're really talking about is, if we had those services, water and then sewer, it's not half-acre lots that you're gonna see. The applications you're gonna see when there's water and sewer are gonna be 6,000-square-foot lots, because that's urban development to the development community. So at that point, I don't see how in the world urban development fits in an area that, by staff's own admission, is a large lot development type of area in this city. So we simply believe that the urban reserve is in error. It doesn't recognize the developed area out in this part of the city, and what we seek to do is consistent with the developed pattern and consistent with several recent decisions made by the city council. So we would ask that you approve our comp plan request, and behalf of the industry, questions?
I know that from previous cases, we don't notice on changes to the comp plan, proposed changes to the comp plan, but notice was sent out because there was, there's corresponding applications both for the rezoning and the preliminary plat, correct?
Yes, so notice of the PUD and notice of the plat would have been sent pursuant to state statutes.
And there's nothing, there's nothing provided in our packet, but I don't suppose that there was any negative feedback that you've received as it relates to this application?
There's no protest that I'm aware of.
I wonder, I wonder to your point, if there would be protest if somebody wanted to build 6,000-square-foot lots in an area that's not supported by it? Because that's what we see, is, you know, is people come in because the density does get there, and then they want to build it, but then the neighbors don't like it because it's not what's consistent with the development pattern.
And then I have a very different problem. Then my problem is, I have a staff potentially telling me that I comply with the comp plan, but frankly, have no political path forward to get urban-style development in an area that has been allowed to develop as rural for decades and generations.
Are there ordinances that we have that are, that restrict the size of the lot you have to have to be served by a septic system? Is there any kind of ordinance that exists?
No.
In that regard? So who decides that? And you can't just...
Sure. Oklahoma State Department of Environmental Quality regulates the minimum lot size necessary to have private sanitary sewer solutions, and that is half-acre. And so our development matches the state regs for private sanitary sewer solutions.
And I believe that there's a provision in the subdivision regulations that has a minimum lot size for septic, is 30,000 square feet minimum? Is that correct?
And we would talk about that probably with the PUD, but yeah, our code requires a 30,000-square-foot minimum within the RA district. Anything smaller than that requires a connection to the public sewer system.
Okay, that's, so there is something...
Yes.
Okay, that's meaningful.
The spray is half-acre. The, what is the...
Aerobic.
The aerobic is half-acre. My experience is, there is nothing in the subregs unless it's been modified here recently.
I misspoke. It was in the zoning. It was in RA zoning.
Okay.
And the RA base is what the next applications are proposing.
Yeah, so the state regs allow aerobic systems on half-acres, and the city, to my knowledge, doesn't have any current requirements on aerobic systems.
So, are we, are we all clear that what Sarah just said is not applicable to this application? Is that right?
It will be to the next one that seeks an RA base.
I get it, I get it, thanks. Not to this, to comp plan amendment, but it would be to plat.
Right. And just, and for the commission's consideration...
Which is coming up, coming up. That's right.
For the commission's consideration, if you're worried about the discussion that we're having about having urban densities up to rural areas, this exists all over Oklahoma City. We have an edge to our urban service boundary. On the other side of that edge that can't be served, you can't develop it with other uses that need those services. That's why the comprehensive plan has compatibility measures in there to try to feather development down, to mitigate a big difference between lot sizes and other types of things you could do on the edges of the urban areas. If you look at the comprehensive plan's entire land use pattern, we're trying to manage growth so that we can expand and provide services to rural areas in the future, and we have that gradation from density ranges, from urban to rural medium to rural low. So, this area, you can see, the map that he's presenting, is all, all of those higher densities are within areas designated as urban reserve or urban medium intensity because they're closer to the urban area than this site. So, there is a line at which the urban low services probably will not be able to be extended to serve now. So, the applicant is welcome to seek a different comprehensive plan amendment to a lower-density use, but as David said, it's this range that doesn't meet urban, and it doesn't meet rural. It's the half-acre lot size, it's where we get into a problem.
And to that point, my client's willing to amend his PUD to the 30,000 square foot lot size.
That...
Sure.
Well, again, that's a problem. It is relevant to this discussion, but we're not supposed to have it because it's not the item in front of us. But we're looking at a comp plan amendment for somebody who wants to put a development in, so it is relevant to this discussion. That's important, as far as I'm concerned. And my, I mean, my frustration, this is just something that each, I guess, planning commissioners are going to have to decide for themselves, is, a plan is great, but a plan that's adopted at one point, amends in the future because things organically occur in the community that we can't anticipate and can't necessarily control. So, if we want to restrict it because we don't have fire, I guess my question to you would be, do you feel comfortable at some point in the future it'll be fire, and at what point would that be? I don't know any other way to force the city's hand than to allow density to drive the discussion about how infrastructure dollars are spent. And it's clear, and I've followed up on some of these cases where we voted against the comp plan amendment, and they go to city council and they go through. So, there is an issue there for me in sending something to council with a recommendation to deny it because it doesn't, it's not supported by the comp plan, they're not, they're not listening to that. At least, the cases that I've seen that I've followed up on. So, how do we manage that? For me, I have to err on the side of, I think if there's development here, it would force the city in some form or fashion to plan to extend things like fire services and sewer. There's water here now, if we don't do it, I don't know when that will be, so.
Asa, go ahead. I need to see if we have anybody that wants, wishes to speak on this application before we get too far enough.
Sure, I'll be super fast.
Go ahead.
Is it the first chapter or the last chapter in there that talks about the fiscal approach of the comprehensive plan, and gave us like three options of how we might economically grow the development in the city?
That's fiscal, fiscal responsibility and management is part of the whole planning profession, and being able to grow the city in a way that we can serve people at high levels of service. So, pacing the growth into areas that we can efficiently serve is the premise of the comprehensive plan. Growth driving us to have to chase it with infrastructure is a more difficult type of growth management strategy than what this comprehensive plan reflects, is putting appropriate land uses where they can be supported today, and in the time that we can catch up with the rural areas and develop them at higher densities, we seek rezonings and redesignations then. Where we have our problems is on those edges in between, figuring out what to do with these parcels that are in neither urban nor rural. And I understand the dilemma, but in terms of, you know, the planning practice and growth management, these are the types of documents that help us make those decisions.
Yeah, and to me, there's always going to be a line, and regardless of how close it is, like that line, I think there was wisdom in it. It was approved at some point by Planning Commission and city council. At this point, I'm standing by staff on this item, and I think, I think to me, this makes good planning sense.
So, anybody here would like to speak on this, with the exception of us and Mr. Box? Could you come forward, please, sir? You can go to that microphone right over there if you'd like, or you can go to the one right in front of you. State your name, your address, and give us an idea of your relationship to this.
Richard Bradley, 9221 Southwest 99th. I'm up in the northern part of that southern section, just below the area in question. My concern is regarding water. We're on a well, we're on a septic system. The water is the big issue. It's, my concern naturally is if you put and load up this area with a lot of high-density real estate, people are going to naturally sink wells to feed their garden or whatever, just as usage, normal usage, whether they have city water or not. And that impact on our water down there, which is already critical now, we have to be careful about flushing the toilet, and we can only do, you know, load the laundry a day, et cetera, et cetera. So, our water, and I'm down 80 feet, is at a critical stage. There's no other, you know, city water out there.
I think, if I could, this has city water.
It affects the city water.
In other words...
Whether it's going to connect... Whether it's city water or not, people are going to drop their own wells so they can cut down their water bill, they're going to, you know, feed their gardens, and that is going to have a drastic impact on addition south.
Unfortunately, that's not this body's job, really, to regulate what some private landowner decides to put a well on their property.
Exactly, but it should be taken into consideration because you're going to force everybody south of you out because of the high-density property you're going to put up there.
Sir, if I may?
Yes.
If, are you opposed to the density of this development?
Oh, absolutely not.
You are or not?
I am not.
You are not. Would you be opposed if there were 6,000 square foot lots?
Yes.
How come?
Because with that many residential lots, it would put a tremendous load on what we have currently in my addition.
Thank you.
But, gee, be clear, you are opposed to half-acre lots, or you're...
Yes, I am opposed to half-acre lots.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, wasn't clear.
All right, just wanted to make sure I understood.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the, wish to speak to us on this item? All right, commissioners, let's take some action, unless anybody's got any additional comments or questions on this. I mean, we got the plan amendment, I think everybody understands the issues, so.
I make the motion that we deny this resolution.
You mean, you want to deny the amendment to the comprehensive plan?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is second to deny item number, whatever, 30, excuse me, amendment to the comprehensive plan. A yes vote means no, okay? So, you understand? All right. So, cast your votes.
It doesn't pass.
So, that is three to three. That's no recommendation.
No action.
No action. Commissioner, I think we have two choices. We can do a motion to approve, not likely, or we can pass this on to the city council without a recommendation.
It doesn't go to...
It's ours, we can't keep it? We have to keep it?
It's a comp plan amendment.
All right, so you're continuing?
I just think there's no action, and we can hear the PUD application. Because if you think of what's happened in the past, the comp plan, the comp plan applications have been denied, we moved the PUD on anyways, and the city council has approved the PUDs even though the comp plan action has been denied. So, there's been no action, the comp plan remains as it is when I walked in here today. We can go hear the PUD.
I actually think that it says when no decision is made, it's an automatic continuance.
You can continue it, but I don't want to continue the PUD because nothing's going to change. Presumably, Janice will be back, and it might be four to three, who knows which way, and until the city council or the mayor appoint seats in five and seven, which we have no idea when that will be, we're going to be spinning our wheels.
So, no action on it? Then, we move on.
To the PUD.
Okay.
And then, just for clarification, without the comprehensive plan amendment, you'd be considering the application under its existing comprehensive plan designation.
Which is similar to all the ones you've had in which you denied the comp plan change request. I'm sorry.
All one.
You want to call the case, and then I'll...
Call the case.
The next item is item 31 for PUD 1689 to rezone 9240 Southwest 89th from AA to PUD 1081, 89.
Mr. Box?
Well, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Same applicant, same engineer. We talked a lot about it, but this is the design of it. It is, again, a PUD that would allow half-acre lots, we're willing to amend that to the 30,000 square foot minimum. Again, we believe it's consistent with the developed pattern in this area. We believe that this particular product is one that has proven very successful. It's, again, right across the street from Mustang, so it's right next to higher-density development. We don't, we don't believe half-acre lots to be urban-style development. I don't know that I'm aware of any half-acre lots or any lots that the owners have sought to drill wells just because when they had city water. So, I, but there's ways we can work with that particular neighbor if he's concerned. We could perhaps stub out the water line to our south line so that he could connect and perhaps drag it through his neighborhood, you know, if they wanted to have that. So, we could, we could find a way to make that work. So, we'd ask for your approval. There are some TEs that perhaps I should address, and it's page 13. It's, if the PUD is approved, the following technical evaluation must apply. Number one, connect to city sewer, we can't agree to that. Number two, we can't agree to, but we agree to three, four, and five. So, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, we believe this is a straightforward application, similar in nature to various other applications that have been approved recently in Ward Three specifically. Be happy to answer any questions.
You've also agreed to amend the minimum lot size to 30,000 square feet, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, commissioners, so we have an application that is before us now with five TEs, two of which will not be agreed to by the developer, three of which will be agreed to, and then there will be an additional TE to amend the application to provide for 30,000, minimum 30,000 square foot lots. Is that right, David?
Yes, sir.
All right. Action?
Well, again, the PUD is not in conformance, and so I recommend denial.
Motion is second to deny PUD, the application for PUD 1689, at number 31. Cast your votes.
We would ask that you move it to city council with no recommendation.
We're going to have to do a motion for that.
So, the motion would be to simply move the item to city council without a recommendation? I'll make that motion.
I, I would like a chance to look that up, because I think that it's an automatic continuance.
Well, it, it does, I mean, it does say, in our, in our bylaws, it does say, under item number three, it says, "In the event there's a lack of five concurring votes on any of the above matters coming before this commission, the case will automatically be continued to the next scheduled meeting." So, for our bylaws.
You can, you can move to waive the bylaws, it's been done for years and years.
Yeah, that's, so that's, I'm just saying, I'm acknowledging that that's true, but I would think that if there was five votes to move it, that that would be appropriate. That's my point.
Legal?
It sounds like city staff would potentially like the continuance to further think about this item? Is that...
That's what the bylaws require when there's not five votes.
From our position, there's nothing more to think about. There, it's three to three, if we add mispowers, it's four to three, who knows which way. And presumably, it will be four to three in perpetuity. My developer has the right to move on with his application, it's a recommendation from this body. Mr. Hensley, I think, is the only one on the commission that will recall, it's not, it wasn't uncommon in cases like this, unless the commission just desires to have this now 30 or 45-minute discussion over and over again, that we recognize that the city council is going to be the one that actually approves or denies this, and to move it on to city council.
I will say this, assuming that the votes that we have remain the same, until we get to nine, we're not going to get to five. And further, I understand that the Ward Seven seat is going to remain until we have a city, this may not be true, but until we have a city councilman in that chair. So, look, I don't know, our lack of quorum, I think this may be a case, I would make an argument that this may be a case, at least we ought to consider moving it on. I can predict, frankly, what the city council will do with this, but that's a separate conversation, and it's not my, we have to decide what we want to do.
I'm fine with it, my only hesitation was to understand, it seemed like there was some desire by the director to potentially have this continued, so I just wanted to hear a little bit more.
I, I am trying to be consistent with the processes that we've established and the purpose behind them, which is to get more people on the commission to help make a decision. And I think speculating on what the vote would be and the outcome would be is, you know, unfortunate, even though it may be accurate.
And if staff wanted more time to further dig into the issues, I don't know that I have a problem. I think it's obvious, everybody's entrenched in the position that they're at, nothing about the discussion is going to change. We're literally just going to hear the same case every two weeks. As much as my client would like to pay me to come here every two weeks and have the same discussion, it's probably in the interest of everybody's time, since you're not paid, to move it on.
At our level of compensation, believe me, I'm for moving them on, in every circumstance.
You're getting the check?
Well, I wasn't supposed to tell anybody, but...
Oh.
No, so, that's my view. And I think that we're, I'm fairly comfortable in my position.
I just think, I think the point is, ultimately, the applicant deserves to have their case heard in an expeditious manner. We got six people sitting here, we're going to have seven. To Mike's point, it doesn't matter, that vote is not relevant, we're still not going to get there. So, how long do we hold this up before we send it on to the decision-making body to let them make a decision? We're just providing a recommendation. So, our recommendation is no recommendation. There's no objection, I'll make a motion to, to move the item along to city council without a recommendation from planning.
Waive the bylaws for this particular purpose. That's a motion. And a second. Dave, a second?
Second.
Come on, folks. All right. Cast your votes. That's passed.
Thank you.
Let's, first and foremost, thank you. Scott, would you make a separate motion to waive the bylaws for this particular application so that we're...
Sure. I'll make a motion to waive the Planning Commission bylaws for PUD 1689, case number 31.
Second.
Motion is second to waive the bylaws. Cast your votes. Cast your votes. No.
Okay. Okay. Item 32 is C 7009, this is the preliminary plat for the same case for Prairie Estates.
So I would ask that this be deferred until, let's say, the first meeting in October, to allow the PUD to be heard and decided by City Council. Unless the Planning Commission is so inclined to vote favorably on the plat today.
I think that's Slim and Dunn, and Slim just left, so, could I get a motion on item number 32 to defer to first meeting in October?
Yes, sir.
What's that date?
What's that date? I don't have my calendar.
October 11.
October 11.
I'll make a motion to continue case number C 7009 to the October 11, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Good figure.
Motion is second to defer item 32 to the October 11 meeting of Planning Commission. Cast your votes. That item is...
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Okay, we finished with all the items that require variance, so we're going back in order. Item 11 was continued, so item 12 is SPUD 1069 to rezone 6932 West Memorial Road from PUD 47 to SPUD 1069.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522, Call Core Drive. If there are significant questions, I might wait for Mr. Highsmith to return, seeing as that there are only five, but in the, in the event that there are not, we are at Memorial and Rockwell, this is an SPUD to allow a Galaxy Home Recreation Store to be built. This is a bit odd in that if you look at the designation of the land currently, it's PUD 47. PUD 47, as the number might indicate, is an extremely old PUD. What the undeveloped hard corner of Rockwell and Memorial is currently zoned under PUD 47 is straight C3. What we seek to do is a rezoning application in the form of a SPUD to allow the use that we have, so we are taking the site from a heavily zoned C3 site to just a handful of uses to provide our PUD to move forward. I will tell you, there is a letter of protest that came in with a reference to the nature of the area and the businesses. I do want to point out the image that was attached to the letter, the dirtwork you see is not dirtwork relevant to my client's site. If you think back to the area that you saw to the west of this site, again, what's zoned PUD 47, is currently developing as a 7-Eleven. They don't need any rezoning, that gas station will be allowed under the current zoning. So what they're seeing is the site development work for that 7-Eleven that's moving forward. There are a couple of TEs. The TE that I would like to address deals with the access. On the site plan you see before you, we show two access points. The TE asks for us to limit it to one. We are in discussions with the owners of 7-Eleven, and as of yesterday, I believe the answer is, they're willing to create a shared drive. And so, what I'd like to do is modify the TE to not read limited to one access, but rather, it's essentially one and a half. So, nothing will change about the number of curb cuts you will see from Rockwell moving east to the edge of our site. It'll just be, we'll have an independent drive for ourselves, and then 7-Eleven will have a drive that is shared with us, essentially split down the centerline of the drive, to allow for both of these sites to share access. 7-Eleven also has franchise on Rockwell, and therefore has taken their main access, I believe, off of Rockwell. So, again, on the TEs, I would just ask that TE two be amended to just state that it shall be limited to one drive plus the shared drive with 7-Eleven. But again, that won't change the number of total drives you will see along that span.
David, will the shared drive then with 7-Eleven kind of have the knock-on effect of providing access from your lot back out to Rockwell, albeit through 7-Eleven?
Yes, sir.
So, alright, I think...
Which I would tell you, living in this area, would be a positive, not a negative, to be clear. Because if you don't have that, and you have to get back out, you have one choice, and that is to go east. And you get to go all the way to MacArthur, turn around, and come all the way back. So, I would take that as a positive to this. I want to make sure that I understand this drive and a half, though. So is it that the black line that's at the bottom of the screen, that's where the subject parcel ends, what you're proposing to do is slide that, again, just frame over to the picture of the bottom drive, down so that half of it is on your parcel and half of it is on the adjoining parcel?
That's right.
I've never heard of a drive and a half, how does that work? I mean, that's just, is that what you say, one and a half drives?
I don't know how to word it, a TE, but I just want to be clear that we're allowed to do that.
By the property line, a full drive split by a property line, and with an access agreement or a shared drive agreement.
So amending the language for the TE, we could just say a shared drive, and staff would be comfortable that we understand that? Okay.
But, the staff report does talk about the location of the furthest east drive being in too close of alignment with the on-ramp to the Kilpatrick Turnpike, and we might need to have traffic staff come up and talk to us about that, because the Turnpike does have a limits of no access requirement that I'm not sure that you all have sorted out yet.
Whatever it is, we'll have to deal with. I'm not sure that there is actual platted limits of no access. It's an odd site, in that they can't deny us access, but we understand we're going to have to work out whatever the details are, whether it be city engineer or OTA. So, perhaps it's not exactly there, we just, we need a drive on, onto Memorial, and then the location to be determined by the city engineer.
If traffic staff is in back, if they could come out so they can explain what they're talking about. Is the 7-Eleven ramp here, anybody from 7-Eleven? Have you guys talked about this drive with OTA, or is it changing, or is, it's not, you're not moving your drive, is that right, or is it already set?
OTA doesn't have limits to the block.
Richard McCubbin, Traffic Management. I spoke with OTA, they sent me the map, I've provided you. It's not very clear where the limits of access are, that were purchased in the 70s by ODOT and then transferred to the Turnpike Authority. The only thing I know is what I've got on that map there, so it should be coordinated with the Turnpike Authority.
I'm happy to say we'll go have a conversation with them. I'd be shocked if the Turnpike Authority has the legal right to limit access to that whole stretch.
They're not limiting access to that whole stretch, they're only limiting it in the area of their on-ramp, because they don't want people coming out of a driveway on the south side and trying to hop onto the Turnpike.
So you're not referring, you're not referring to our east drive?
Your east drive is actually probably outside the limits of no access, it's the other driveways.
Yeah, whatever we have to do on the other drive is fine with us, whether it's half on ours or perhaps all on 7-Eleven. We acknowledge through the TE that we can't have two independent drives onto our site. And I think that's the only thing staff was worried about with the TE.
Actually, our concern is whether the location of the driveway in relation to the on-ramp, so.
Well, but it sounds like that's OTAs, that's not us. And 7-Eleven seems fairly confident that they had no particular issue with their drive. So, I don't know that it's for us to worry about, but if there's an OTA issue, there's going to be one drive.
In other words, we can approve it, but it really may not make much difference. If OTA objects to it and they have legal grounds to do it, then they could be limited to one drive anyway.
I think that's their problem, not mine, not ours.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm with you.
Our purpose was just to make sure that the applicant was aware.
Yeah, understood. So you're aware?
Consider me aware.
Alright. Commissioners, you got anything? Anybody else to speak on this? I don't have anybody signed up or any members of the public to speak on item number 12.
There was a reference letter of objection that was in our file, but I guess they're not, they're not present. If there's no other discussion, I'd make a motion to recommend approval on SPUD 1069. With the amendment to TE number two that should OTA allow it, they'd be allowed a shared drive.
Right, and I think that's covered with number three, too, so, one way or the other, I think we're okay. There's going to be a shared drive. Second? Motion to approve item number 12 as amended. Cast your votes. That item is approved. Thank you, David.
Item 13 is SPUD 1073 to rezone 15001 Southwestern Avenue from AA to SPUD 1073.
Good afternoon, excuse me, Commissioners. My name is Doug Melton with the Morrison Shipley Farm, appearing on behalf of our client, Casey's General Stores. We're seeking your approval the day of a PUD at the southwest corner of 149th and Southwestern Street, that's currently a vacant piece of property zoned agriculture. We are seeking a SPUD to be identical to that style that we brought to you and you approved earlier in the summer, which is generally commercial three. We'll have a 4,500-square-foot convenience store, canopy, six pump islands, and conform to everything else that you've asked for in C3.
Just to be clear, the uses that are listed in your application, these are carve-outs from C3, and you want the balance of the C3 uses?
Yes, sir, that's correct. This is styled identical to what you had asked for in our application at Willshire and Council.
Right, okay. Commissioners, have you agreed the technical evaluations are some clear, sidewalks?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Nobody signed up on this, Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
I just have two. Your freestanding accessory signs, piece of your master design statement doesn't address EMD signs?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I can't hear.
Are you having, are you planning to have electronic message display boards?
Not to my knowledge, sir, no, sir.
So would you be, would you object to making that specific prohibiting those?
That'd be fine, sir.
Wait a minute, just unclear, aren't you going to have your gas prices, are they going to be?
We'll have the monument sign out there with the gas sign. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, so, I mean, is that, is that count, or is that different?
Though, I think it counts, doesn't it?
I thought you were speaking of something separate from the monument sign that we've...
Post your gas prices.
Yes, sir.
So he's got to have an electronic display for his gas prices.
Okay. As long as everyone's, I don't have a problem with that, but as long as everyone else is aware, because that's a common issue of discussion, so...
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
I thought you were talking about something advertising yard sales or something, so, excuse me.
The only other question I had that was, I've never, I don't know that I've, maybe I've just overlooked this before, but I'd like some staff insight here. It says, "Access one driveway, a maximum of 30 feet unless otherwise approved by the Oklahoma City Public Works Director."
Maximum driveway width in the code is 30 feet, but there's a caveat that allows the Public Works Director to allow a wider drive if the applicant can show that it's needed.
So is it just the Public Works Director who can approve? I mean, and all they're approving is that they're not adding or removing drives?
No, it's just, he can allow an extra.
I've just never seen that before, I guess I missed it.
Okay, so, are, the, so except for your monument sign and your published gasoline prices, that's all the EMD that you want to have?
Yes, sir.
Is that the right way to say that? It's poorly worded, but everybody understands, right? Okay, good. Alright. Scott, you want to do it better, have at it.
Well, I will make a motion to recommend approval to the City Council on SPUD 1073, and we're not amending anything on the EMD side, so there are no amendments.
Okay.
Second?
Motion and a second to approve item 13. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item 14 was continued. Item 15 is SP 510 to operate an automotive and equipment dealership and mall at 1800 West Memorial Road.
David Box, 522, Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a special permit application to operate a car dealership. It's a bit unique. Cindy, do you have the colored site plan? The applicant is Carvana, this is their first entry into the Oklahoma City market. As the commission is aware, under C3 zoning, car sales requires a special permit, so that's the reason we're here. One thing that you'll note about this site is how small it is compared to what we typically see in car lots. This is less than an acre. The reason being, you can see the small footprint right there. Ms. Langton, if you'd go to the next slide. What we seek to build here, although it is a car lot, because that's what our code calls it, what this is, is a car vending machine. Literally a car vending machine, where it's a glass tube. This is a unique situation in that this is a by appointment only. If an individual has purchased a car online, they have two options, they can have the car delivered to their home, or they can come to the vending machine and present a token, and the car will be dispensed. And so why that's significant, I think, for your view, is there won't be a lot of traffic. People only go there if they have an appointment to specifically pick up their car. So we don't anticipate big problems with traffic. Additionally, there is no mechanic shop portion of this site, there would be typically at a car dealership or a car mall. So, like a service there, yeah, no certain, no lube shop, nothing like that. All that is handled off-site somewhere else. So, the impact is minimal. The area is certainly commercialized, we are behind the Walmart Supercenter, so our east is a church, but east of that church is the Chisholm Creek Development, so it's in keeping with the Memorial Road corridor. This will be visible from the Turnpike and frankly provide a nice visual element to that drive. So, we would ask for your approval, and there are no technical evaluations.
I had one comment on this. This special permit survives 12 months after your use ceases, is that right? That's right, that's how that works, is that right?
Does it cease to exist if it is vacated for 12 months?
Right.
I believe that's accurate, yes.
So, if during that 12-month period, some other person wanted to put a car lot, not a Carvana, not likely, but that could in fact happen, right?
If they can meet the very strict details of our program description, which if you read it, it would limit it to Carvana, or perhaps somebody that might face some sort of trade infringement case in the district court if they tried to operate the car vending machine.
So, in other words, the, your program description becomes in part of the conditions for the extension, or the lifetime of that special permit, so it would survive at least 12 months?
Right, so instead of the master design statement of an SPD or PUD, the program description becomes the regulations that govern this site.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful for me.
If, David, if there's, this is by appointment only, and there's not much car traffic, do we need two drives?
We do believe we want two drives, because if you think about what will happen, cars will have to come here likely on some big truck, we don't want truck traffic conflicting with our vehicular traffic. And there are already, I believe, three cuts there now, so it is the traditional pattern there, we do want the two drives.
Well, you're not taking, you're not taking a curb cut off of Memorial, you're just coming off of Indiana.
Just Indiana.
Yeah.
Nobody signed up, is there anybody here to speak to us on item number 15? Action, Commissioner?
I recommend approval of SP 510.
Second?
Motion and a second to approve item number 15. Cast your votes. That item is approved.
Item 16 is C 7007, the preliminary plat of Springs at Native Plains.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers representing the developer. We've read the staff report, there were four comments, and we agree with those, and we just request approval of the plat.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Anderson, or other questions? Nobody signed up for this.
You did say you're in agreement with all the TEs?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Take the motion to approve. Second?
Motion is second to approve item 16. Cast your votes. That item is approved. Thank you.
Item 17 was continued. Item 18 is PUD 1691 to rezone 4100 North Sarah Road from R1 to PUD 1691.
Good afternoon, Jason Spencer with Crafton Toll on behalf of the applicant.
Jason Spencer with Craft and Toll on behalf of the applicant. So this P.U.D. is to allow for a single-family housing. It'll have 5,000-square-foot lots on approximately 7.6 acres. It's located just on the east side of Sarah Road, just south of Route 66. So we're proposing a gated subdivision. Like I said, with 5,000-square-foot lots, we think this concept makes a good transition between the residential on the south and the commercial zoning and uses on the north and west, and also with the highway to the north. Access will be from a gated, one gated access onto Sarah Road. We're also proposing an emergency access down that other sliver of property. We're a little bit limited on frontage here. And so with that emergency access, TE number one calls for residential fire suppression systems to be provided. Since we're providing that emergency access, we'd ask that that be deleted. Spoke with the fire marshal on this and showed him our plans for the emergency access. He was agreeable with emergency access, as long as we provide curb cut onto 44th Circle where it connects and provide 10-foot radiuses on that, which we will agree to do. Do you have to answer any questions?
So your larger lots are where? I mean, are they interspersed or are they basically up against the residential in this particular case?
So you can see the pie-shaped lots going around on kind of southeast corner there. That's some of the larger lots. And we've got a little bit larger lots on the south there, but they're relatively, you know, ranging around the 5,000 square feet. We just space those out a little bit evenly there on the south.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? We have some people signed up on this one. Before we get to them. All right. Mr. Harper? Is it Harper? Hopper? Hooper? Sorry. Could you come up, please, sir? State your name and your address and...
My name is Richard Hooper. 10521 Northwest 40th.
Where is that in relation to the subject property?
If it's sitting like it is now, the top is north, the south is south, and my backyard is on the south side adjoining it.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
There's a couple of things that I'm here representing are John Slarm, president of our Homeowners Association. His lot is adjoining on the west side, his home. And some of the things that we have concerns about is that this change would, of course, be the lots would be a lot smaller. Their width would be like 50 feet wide. And if I could bring this up to you, I don't know if you have a way to look at this, that these lot sizes are like 50 feet, so there'll be two lots in our backyard. Maybe a lot and a half, but they're pretty narrow. Now, I think there probably could be worse developments back there. I think this is a good development if they hold true to what they say, and that is that it is geared toward retirement, and I don't know if anything in their bylaws or their proposed plan would guarantee that. And the second item is two-story houses. We don't want two-story houses looking down on our backyard. And that is the main two things that the Homeowners Association and the other neighbors surrounding me that we discussed that are concerning us. And those two things, we would like to make sure do not happen. Otherwise, we would approve this.
All right. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Hooper? Jason, you want to hand out what he passed around? He may have an extra copy there. Okay. Thank you. Now then, Mr. Juarez, would you like to come up, please, sir? Would you please do the same? State your name and address and kind of where you are in relation to the property.
Our house is south...
Wait a minute. Tell me who you are first.
Sorry?
Tell me who you are.
Pedro Fuentes live on 10512 Northwest 40th. Is south of that number one lot across the street.
Okay.
Maybe a little bit to the right.
All right.
First, I have to apologize. English is not my first language. I'm a little bit concerned about the density of this plan. The size of the lots are pretty much half of what we have. Concern also about the lowering of the cost of the property. I'm really familiar with the plan. I second what the gentleman before me mentioned about second floors and the plans for retirement plan. Sorry. But my main concern is that this new development do not lose value fast and bring down the houses around with them.
Just out of curiosity, how big is your lot, Mr. Juarez?
Pretty much half acre.
Half acre?
So when you divide 7.6 acres by 33, you'll end up with a very small lot. And for me, that's just equal cheaper housing, and that's, in my opinion, is not going to be a good addition.
Any questions for Mr. Juarez? Commissioners? Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
Jason, you got anything you want to tell us?
So I've got the plat for their addition. Most of the lots in that addition are 75-foot wide. We're coming down with 50-foot-wide lots. The typical lot dimensions, now obviously they have some pie-shaped lots that are a little bit bigger, but they're typically 125 feet to 130 feet by 75 feet wide, so they're not quite half an acre there. They're closer to 10,000 square feet. So I think, you know, we've got a... There's a Dollar General that sits just on that northwest corner of us. You've got commercial zoning across Sarah Road into the north. I think our densities, you know, work and go with a little bit smaller lot, I think is a good transition. As far as the retirement community, the developer's indicated some interest in that. I don't know that he's going to be willing to limit to just marketing to that, but it is going to be a gated community that will be a homeowners association. And as far as the two-story houses, I mean, with their R1 zoning to the south, they have the ability to build two-story houses. Now, I will say that the developer's intent is to build one-story houses. Some may have a bonus room, and if they do, those lots that are on the south and west, that bonus room window would be over the garage, would face to the street, so it would face away from the neighbor's house if he does build that. But we think it's a good fit for the area. Do you have to answer any other questions?
So just out of curiosity, I'm that concerned about the lots. I mean, I get residential up against residential. You got neighbors looking into your backyard sometimes. So, but you're indicating the intent is to build one story, and if they have a bonus room, it would be... Any view would be facing the street?
Facing to the north or the... Correct.
Would you put that in your P.U.D.?
Yes, we'll agree to doing that.
All right.
I mean, if you guys want to, I would recommend that they don't put it in their P.U.D. because I think it's part of the base zoning, and I think it's totally fine. Like, I actually... I hope development comes in the future, and this area continues to densify. I think that's part of the plan.
Okay.
But that's just my position.
The developer's indicated that he's good with doing that, so if it makes the neighborhood make the neighbors happy, then we'll agree to putting that in the P.U.D.
Commercial decision. I like it. All right?
I just have one question for you, so that... I just want to make sure I understand this. So the R1 base...
Yes, sir.
And then the special conditions that are going to apply to the R1 base, are the minimum lot size going to be 5,000 square feet, right?
Correct.
And then 60 and 5... What... Just real quick, what's the... What are the standards there? Is it 6,000 feet?
For R1 would have been 6,000.
6,000, that's what I thought. And what's the lot coverage?
Off the top of my head on that...
The application said the maximum would be 60 percent.
Right. I'm just wondering what the standard R1 lot coverage is. I'm just curious how much we're... Is it 50?
50.
That's what I was thinking, too.
I think it's probably 50.
Thanks, sir.
So then, I mean, it's not significant. It's just that... And what's the rationale for needing to do that? Is it just truly to try to keep the cost of the project down?
He's gearing for a product that has a smaller yard, easier to maintain, looking kind of for something that would be towards a retiree, something to that effect, where it's lower yard maintenance. He plans on doing brick houses. We've agreed to the 70 percent brick, so he's wanting to put in a little bit nicer product. He looked at the R1 ZL zoning, which goes all the way down to 40-foot-wide lots, but wanted to do something a little bit bigger where he can make sure he has the front door on the front of the house and not on the side, so I think it's a good compromise there.
What this appears like to me is some of that product like the Johnsons have built out in Hidden Creek and over off of Britton and west of Pennsylvania, where it's a little more dense, but there is... There are single-family standalones. Lot coverage is pretty substantial.
Yeah. My mother lives in Rockwell. There are quadplexes that share a driveway, but the HOA maintains the entire exterior. The neighborhood's gorgeous.
Yeah.
Beautiful all the time because the HOA's doing it all.
Yeah. Is the HOA maintaining yards in this station?
Potentially. That hasn't been determined yet, but there will be an HOA for the addition, and it will be gated. And to be clear, too, with the... On the agreement for the one-story with bonus rooms, or if there are bonus rooms facing to the north, that would apply to the lots that back up to the neighboring addition, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. The other ones are...
Front base zoning.
It's not an issue particularly. Okay. This is... Can we motion on this from somebody? Anybody here to speak on this other than the two gentlemen that have spoken? Mr. Hooper, do you have anything else?
Just something unclear. Is there going to be... Is there going to be a requirement, age requirement for this purchase of these properties?
There will not be. It's not stated in the P.U.D., and we're not going to impose the condition ourself.
No, we will not.
No, we will not. So, sorry.
So I lost that one.
Well, you didn't lose anything. You never really had it. Let's look at it that way. Glass is half full.
This is pretty much rough justice up here.
So, but...
But the second thing is...
No overlooks into this house.
Overlook.
Right. And if there's a bonus room in any of those or a second story that will be facing... The windows will be facing out into the street, interior to this new addition, not interior addition, which is a pretty big concession.
It is a big concession.
That's right.
I really appreciate this council. This is the second time this council's really helped me in that area, and I thank you.
Satisfied customer. All right. Semi-satisfied.
If there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council for P.U.D. 1691 with the amendment that second-story windows have to face the street. What's sufficient to get staff comfortable with that language? Face north and west? What am I dealing with here? We'll figure it out. That's the motion.
Yeah, we just asked that it be limited to the lots or the...
Limited on the west and south side.
That's right.
Okay. The west and south lots. Staff satisfied with that?
Is it east? Oh, well. Okay.
Staff says they got it.
Yeah, I think they've got it. All right. Can I get a second?
Yes.
Motion and a second to approve item 18, adding the... Or bending the TE regarding second story. Jason, you got anything else?
Yeah, we also... There's that TE one that we asked be removed, requiring residential fire suppression systems.
That's right. And you said staff is comfortable with that deletion?
I talked to the fire marshal, and he said he was okay as long as we provided the access.
Provided the access.
And the access, which we agreed to do.
Okay. So deleting TE number one with the addition... Because of the addition of the emergency access. Cast your votes. Item is approved. As conditioned... Yeah, we may.
And item 19 is the associated preliminary plat, C. 712, Royal Garden.
Jason Spencer with Craft and Toll on behalf of the applicant again. So the subsequent preliminary plat, 33 single-family lots on 7.62 acres. We agree with the TEs, and happy to answer any questions.
Should we add the additional TE, the additional matter about the overlook, about the windows and that one to this part, to the plat? No need? Okay. Thanks. Anybody here to speak to us on this one? Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval.
Okay.
Second?
Motion and a second to approve item 19. Cast your votes. That item is approved. Thank you.
We've heard item 20, so we're on 21, which is P.U.D. 1071 to rezone 1100 Southwest 59th from C3 to S.P.U.D. 1071.
Hi there. Mason Schwartz, 522 Call Core Drive. On behalf of the applicant, this is an S.P.U.D. application for Southwest 59th and Douglas. The use that we seek to do on this property is the transportation terminal for an international charter bus service company. Essentially, customers will be picked up here on-site and be chartered through a bus service company internationally to and from Mexico. This type of use is in particular demand in this area of the city. There are similar uses up and down the areas within a mile or two in either direction of this site. So right now, it's zone C3. We do plan to keep it C3. That's within the S.P.U.D. The only issue is that right now, currently, the use unit is permitted under special permit for this site. However, one of the conditions for the special permit is that maintenance, storage, and repair of the charter buses be done within an enclosure on-site. When we first submitted the P.U.D. or S.P.U.D. application, we could not agree to that. We wanted to be able to do the maintenance, storage, and repair of the buses on-site without the enclosure, so instead of submitting the special permit application, we submitted the S.P.U.D. After we submitted it and talked with Janice, who's not here today, she had some concerns, and we ultimately decided to amend the S.P.U.D. to say that with the three years of approval of the application, we will put up the enclosure to do all of maintenance, storage, repairs of the buses on-site. Further, with the amendments to the S.P.U.D., we agreed to limit the site to no more than four charter buses at any given time on the site. In addition, when our client bought the property, there were three access points, two on Southwest 59th, one on Douglas. Our client has already put up a new fence on the property and fenced off the most eastern access point on Southwest 59th. Within the S.P.U.D., we've agreed to limit... Keep it that way, fenced off and limit the access points to one on Southwest 59th and one on Douglas. The one on Douglas in particular is kind of set wide. It's been set wide for a while. We think it'll allow good access for the buses to come in and out. We agreed to TE's number two, three, and four. TE number one is asking us to do the maintenance, repair, and whatnot of the charter buses off-site. Again, it's kind of the whole reason we're here. We would meet the special permit requirements if we had with the enclosure, so we feel like the three-year compromise kind of satisfies the maintenance and repair concerns that are raised by the code. No protests that we are aware of, various letters of support actually that we submitted and circulated. Happy to answer any questions. We ask for your approval.
Mason, we talked about this with... One thing that I wanted to make sure is, we don't want the buses going back south, or I don't, I shouldn't say we, but I don't think we should have the buses going through the residential down Douglas, which is a residential street, not a arterial or anything like that. I would prefer that they not go down there, that the driver... You have, you know, you agreed to right... Left turn only to go back to Southwest 59th, get to the arterials, et cetera, because I don't... et cetera, because I don't, I just have an aversion to sending buses down there for commercial purposes.
Correct, and we can agree to it. And the bus, so if you think about how the property's laid out, eventually the enclosure will be sitting on the southeast side of the property. The buses would be, they're backed in, they'd be facing Southwest fifty-ninth Street. To the east, to the right, would be the exit onto Douglas. We would be willing to say, no, you're not allowed to come out onto Douglas and go right back toward the neighborhood. I'm not sure they'd have any use for that anyways or that even be able to maneuver that turn, but certainly we'd be willing to say, anything out to Douglas goes left fifty-ninth Street.
Just to be clear, what we're amending there is the master design statement, revision number seven on access, we're saying left turn only onto Douglas.
Correct.
Got it.
East, or north, excuse me. I'm directionally challenged today.
Challenged.
Yes. Yeah. Okay, on the three-year thing, how are you, how is that going to work? I mean, do you have room for a structure on this property? It's not particularly big.
Yeah, it's, and kind of Janice and I talked about this when we went out and visited the site. It's a little bit, I think, bigger than it looks. There's certainly room for a structure. If we were to place the structure in the southeast corner of the property, there'd be room to build the structure and still have enough space before you even get to the access on Douglas to be able to park the buses north to south. So there is room for a structure on the property.
Is there any way, well, let me ask you this. Can you not store till you get the structure? Or do mechanical work, et cetera?
Well, again, I think part of that was the reason we didn't apply for the special permit in the first place. For purposes of getting the operation up and running, they envision this as being kind of a, part of a chain with a Tulsa location, perhaps linking up with the San Antonio location and ultimately down to Mexico. I think they want to get things up and running before they're having to worry about completing all the building permits and the structures. They've got the buses already purchased, so they were onsite, we actually removed them offsite. So I think they're kind of ready to rock and roll and they need a little bit of time to be able to finance and construct that enclosure. But ultimately, they do want to do it and they don't anticipate it taking three years, to be clear. They want the enclosure to be there, they just want that buffer period to be able to work with.
How long do the buses stay? I mean, like, give us kind of the, how the operation works so that I have a better sense. It's in the bus storage location, is it?
Sure, so there could be, if there's no charter trips running, obviously you could have four there at one time, but most likely there will be at most one or two there at any given time. The other of the four buses would be to and from, long trips, seven, ten, fourteen days, international. So this is not something where it's a, you know, buses are stored there overnight, every night, and then the next route comes in the morning. These buses are gone for days at a time.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Schwartz?
Is anyone signed up to speak on this?
Is this similar to the buses that we see on Southwest twenty-ninth, kind of between, I think it's between Villa and... Southwest twenty-ninth kind of across the street from groceries, the large grocery store on Southwest twenty-ninth about Villa? You know what I'm talking about?
I think it is. In fact, we may have submitted, I can't remember, it's been a while now, but we've submitted several pictures of small little operations where you see buses parked next to different businesses on Southwest twenty-ninth, which our understanding they're doing similar uses as this. The difference is this site will actually be set up correctly, zoned correctly for it.
Usually those buses are just there like overnight, maybe a day and a half? Is that kind of the same sort of operation that I see there?
I'd have to, we'd have to look at each individual site and operation, but I can tell you that, you know, in times of good business, the buses are going to be gone more than they're. That's kind of the nature of the business, so.
Thank you. I might just want to let you all know too, that on the idea to allow this use to exist for three years until it's enclosed, that's a, it's a real challenge for the city to be able to track time to then initiate a follow-up with an applicant when the zoning requires that to be done. So just procedurally, that's a bit of a challenge for the city. Just FYI.
Sheriff, we understand that. We don't incorporate those provisions very often into, we just felt like this was a unique situation where because it was the only reason, we wouldn't have, otherwise we would have applied for the special permit, because it's the only reason we applied for the SPUD, we tried to work that in there. Otherwise, we would have just gone the special permit route.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Anybody else sign up to speak?
Nobody's signed up. Anybody can speak to us on this one?
There's an awful lot of letters of support that we got. Six, six letters of support in total for a bus terminal.
It's not a terminal, per se.
Sure.
Well, what's your pleasure?
I'm concerned about the timing, but I think, you know, while the city may not follow up, I think if they start to act in bad faith, it at least gives a mechanism for there to be some regulation there down the road. I'm not sure how else to deal with it. I'll just make a motion, see what happens, I guess. I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council on SPUD ten seventy-one, subject to the deletion of TE, no, we're keeping TE one, right? We're just limiting it...
We're keeping TE's two, three, and four, we need to delete, we'd ask to strike TE number one.
Well, wait a minute, we need to make...
You've got to put the three-year, yeah.
No, we've got to get the three-year condition in there, so you have to...
Well, so the three-year condition is in the spud.
Okay.
We submitted a revised spud with master design statement, so that's a good spud.
So, then it would be with the deletion of TE one and the inclusion in paragraph seven to access that the turn lane, the turning onto Douglas be limited to left turn only going northbound?
Yes.
Motion and a second to approve item twenty-one as condition? Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Approved.
Item twenty-two is previously heard. Item twenty-three is SPUD ten seventy-two to rezone one-eighteen Southwest Forty-third from R one to SPUD ten seventy-two.
George Mendoza, seven oh three ASP, Suite one hundred. I'm here to represent SPUD ten seventy-two for the applicant.
Okay, tell us about your application, please.
Okay, right now, the lots ten, nine, and eight are all zoned I two. Lot seven and six are zoned R one, and they are, there is a surrounding perimeter wall on that, that's about ten foot tall, so we were just suggesting to make it all I two. When the applicant purchased the property a few years ago, it was sold as I two throughout and we were unaware of the R one factor.
I looked at the aerial photo that we have here. How many cars do you have on this lot? On the corner?
On the corner, no, that's not ours. The one on the corner, that's on Robinson, it's not the same.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you for that clarification.
It's okay.
So, this is not meant to combine all of this together, or is yours just that property that you're, that's detailed as the subject site for us?
Correct, just that site. It's five lots.
So, corner is a separate business?
Yes, sir.
Everything on Robinson are separate businesses from yours?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Nobody's signed up.
What is, in our packet, it says that the north of the subject site is I two and R one. What's, what is the R one? Are those single-family homes? What's, they're pretty big structures. What's across the street?
Across the street, there's a business, but to the right of it, which I guess would be east, they are single residential homes.
Okay. Is there anybody here to speak to us on item number twenty-three? Nobody's signed up. Commissioners?
You agree to the TE's?
Yes.
It's kind of an odd space. There's all kinds of industrial stuff there already and I'll move for approval. Recommend approval.
Second.
Wait a minute. And that TE included our setback requirement, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Motion is second to approve item number twenty-three. Cast your votes. That item's approved.
Item twenty-four is SPUD ten seventy-five to rezone fourteen-nine-hundred Southeast one hundred and fourth Street from C four to PUD ten seventy-five.
David Box, again, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive. Mr. Chairman, I do have a question before we get into twenty-four. It's my understanding that Ms. Coffey has a matter she must leave, I don't know if it's a three-thirty hard stop. Item twenty-seven is a case in Ward four in which Mr. Privet is going to recuse himself.
Right.
I don't know what kind of timeframe we're working with, with Ms. Coffey, but I wanted to bring that to...
Why don't we do this? Let's, we have some people signed up to speak on twenty-four. So, let's see if we can get, let's move to twenty-seven and come back. I hate to do it, but we're going to, it might be better since Mike's got to step out and that way we've got five. Okay? Sorry.
So item twenty-seven is PUD sixteen eighty-five to rezone thirteen-twenty-one Southeast sixty-sixth Street from I two to PUD sixteen eighty-five.
Still David Box, same address. This is an application to rezone a piece of property that is currently zoned I two to a PUD that would allow a batch plant. Would you put the aerial on screen? This is an area east of I thirty-five and immediately north of what was the Plaza Mayor. When we see the aerial, that'll be displayed here momentarily, what you'll see is this is an area that is fairly industrialized, a lot of heavy uses. Our eastern boundary actually abuts the railroad tracks, as you can see. I two is the predominant use unit that you see out there. So again, this is for a batch plant. It's an area that we believe is appropriate for this type of use. There are a handful of TE's. It is my understanding we can agree to all of them, but I do want to make sure on TE number one, for purposes of the record, we've talked to JJ and it says no uses associated with the batch plant shall be located within a hundred and fifty feet of the south boundary. We agree to that, except for I need to make clear on the record that we will have our drive and gravel yard within that space, but the actual office and operations are outside of that hundred and fifty foot. So we do agree to it, to the extent that we're allowed to have our gravel yard and drive. My understanding that Mr. Chamberlain is okay with that.
If you'd be more comfortable changing the language before it goes to council, we can work on that.
So with that, we agree to the TE's.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Box? Commissioners? Is there anybody who'd like to speak to us on item number twenty-seven? Nobody's signed up.
Make a motion to approve with the TE's, with TE one amended as explained.
Second. Motion is second to approve item number twenty-seven. Cast your votes. That item is approved.
Thank you.
Okay.
For the record, make sure that Mike did not vote. He's recused himself from his matter.
Got it.
Thank you.
Going back to item twenty-four, SPUD ten seventy-five to rezone fourteen-nine-hundred Southeast one hundred and fourth.
Do we want to alert Mr. Privet that he's permitted to re-enter the room? Mike? Well, he's coming again. David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the developer, who is here with me, Mr. Justin Dill. This is an application for a Dollar General at a hundred and fourth and South Choctaw. This is perhaps one of the more unique sites that I've seen in this part of the city in that you've got currently existing C four zoning. C four zoning is the absolute most intense commercial zoning the city has as a policy. I don't believe the city will ever grant C four zoning again, and so it's odd that you've got that heavy of a commercial use out in this area. The other half of the site is zoned AA, so what we have filed is an SPUD, again, to allow the Dollar General. If you look at the use units we allow, we restrict it to just two. So again, it's the use units within, I guess it's RC plus, just the two we believe necessary for the Dollar General. There is a T, there are two TE's, both of which we agree to. Commissioner Highsmith, you'll be happy to note that you only see one curb cut on this site at my client's will, that's what they started out with. So this is a use unit that's very popular in these rural parts of the city, in parts of the metro. They serve a very specific and important need. Rather than people having to drive thirty-five, forty minutes into town, they're able to go to these Dollar Generals and pick up the one, two, or three things they might need at that moment. So this is consistent with various other Dollar Generals. You see at locations very similar. It's worth noting, we're not that far south from I forty, just up Choctaw Road. So with that, Chair did mention there were people signed up, we were not aware of any written protest, but we'd be happy to answer any questions, address any concerns that get raised. Again, we do agree with the technical valuations and we'd ask for your approval.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Box?
No, Dollar General.
Okay.
In the country.
Melinda Lloyd, would you like to come up? Ms. Lloyd? I think I can bring that around. Okay. Guess she had to depart. Ms. Lloyd was going to impede us to say that she does not want the rezoning. All right. Commissioners, nobody else has signed up. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to us on item number twenty-four? Any questions for Mr. Box? Okay.
Move for approval. Recommend motion to City Council.
Second.
Motion is second then to approve item twenty-four. Cast your votes. That item is approved.
Item twenty-five is SP five oh seven, a special permit for a telecommunications tower to be located at four thousand South Agnew Avenue.
Should we take a break?
Let the information get disseminated and perhaps...
What's your name and what's your address?
David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive, here again on behalf of the applicant. On this item, I've got a host of people here with me. Because this is a telecommunications tower application, I have with me an RF engineer to walk through all of the technical data. I also have site acquisition specialists that can walk through the alternative site analysis that was undertaken. And I'm going to spend some time upfront going through what I believe to be the law that applies to these. It's worth noting, to my knowledge, there is no protest. This commission will recall a case here several months ago in which there was a significant amount of protest. So this is a special permit. This is zoned R one, and in the R one district, there are certain conditions that you can meet, and it's called a residential district waiver, and you simply go to the eighth floor and get a permit. In the instance in which you don't meet the conditions, you apply for a special permit. So what we have is essentially a use contemplated under the zoning district and it's on review at both the planning commission and ultimately the City Council. I think it's worth noting, when you think about a special permit, we're going to get into this a little bit here momentarily, if you look at page three of your staff report, you see what is titled, section three, general standards. When you think about a special permit, whether it's for a telecom tower or like previously with my, with the Carvana car lot, what you see outlined in the staff report as general standards are the same general standards that apply to all special permits, no matter what the use is. What makes this different is specifically the federal government, through enacting the Telecommunication Act of nineteen ninety-six, has specifically removed certain items from the purview of cities when considering applications such as this. The two things I handed out that aren't bound, one is a copy of Title forty-seven of the United States Code, and then a case that is entitled T-Mobile versus United Government of Wyandotte County, that I will, for purposes of the record, just refer to as the Wyandotte case. So first, I'd like to look at the U.S. Code Title forty-seven. I've annotated this. If you turn to page four of that handout, what you will see is, this is where the Act is talking about the various limitations put on municipalities or government entities when deciding telecommunications tower cases. So, most notably for our discussion is item B sub one, sub one. And this is talking about the regulation of placement, construction, modification of personal wireless service facilities by any state or local government or instrumentality thereof. One, shall not unreasonably discriminate among providers of functionally equivalent services. Why I'm getting to this point is, I believe that will be requested that this be a stealth tower. I would point to dozens, perhaps hundreds of other steel monopole towers in this city that have been approved in R one districts as argument that to require... that have been approved in R1 districts as argument that to require my client to build a stealth tower in the absence of protests, in the absence of anybody asking for it, would be unreasonably discriminatory and violate that section of the code. Furthermore, if we think about what might happen in the event that it is requested that we build a stealth tower, and we say no, and that item would be denied, then we have to look to, is that denial in writing? Typically at city council, what the staff has is a court reporter that's here. I would agree that that probably satisfies the in-writing element. But more importantly, the denial must be based on substantial evidence. So that's where I want to focus a lot of our discussion, as to what is substantial evidence? And it's worth noting, the, the whole second analysis is, a city can deny, or can, can, can rule on it based upon substantial evidence, and a telecom operator can still win if, even though it's on substantial evidence, we can make the case that it's an effective prohibition. The effective prohibition clause is when you get into, we meet our burden with the RF data, we meet our burden with the alternative site analysis. So before we even get to that phase of it, I want to talk about what is and what is not substantial evidence. Specifically, again, the Wyandotte case, and it's worth noting, the Wyandotte case is a case out of Kansas City that was appealed up through the federal circuits, specifically the 10th Circuit, which Oklahoma lies in, so it is precedential. The Wyandotte case says, quote, "In order to be supported by substantial evidence, the proffered reasons must comport with the objective criteria in existence, i.e. zoning regulations, permit application policies, et cetera. Governing bodies cannot simply arbitrarily invent new criteria in order to reject an application." So, why I believe that's important is, if we're going to say we are demanding a stealth cell tower, I believe that is inventing new criteria, because it's not an objective criteria in existence, as the Wyandotte case specifically says. So if you look to the general conditions outlined in the staff report, there is no objective criteria. I'm not sure what the city would rely on if they denied it, but if we take a look at these briefly, I think I can dispose of most of them. So again, back to page three of the staff report, under the general standards. All special permit uses shall satisfy the following general standards. One, the use shall conform to the policies of the adopted comprehensive plan. It's my understanding that there are no official policies regarding telecom towers in the comprehensive plan, so I don't think that applies. The proposed use shall not adversely affect the use of neighboring properties. I don't believe that applies here, because I don't believe there's any evidence in the record, or could be, that would prove that point, and I'll get to some other elements of dealing with that momentarily. Pedestrian and vehicle traffic generated, I'm not going to read the rest of it, because it doesn't apply. Adequate utility, drainage, parking, loading, signs, access, et cetera, again, doesn't apply. The site shall front or have direct access to a street having adequate right-of-way. This site will have access, direct access and adequate right-of-way. So perhaps if they could point to anything, it would have to be number six. But again, let's go back to what the case says. It must be supported by objective criteria in existence. To my knowledge, this is really the only criteria in existence. And so what it says is, the city council may impose specific conditions regarding location, design, and operation to assure safety. And so if there were a proffered reason that dealt with safety, perhaps that would pass this test. It's a safety to prevent a nuisance. Further, and to control the noxious effects of sound, I don't believe there will be excessive sound generated by this. Light, I don't believe there will be excessive light. Odor, I'm assuming there is no odor. Dust, I don't believe there will be any dust, or other similar conditions. I don't see where there is anything in the code that is, quote, "objective criteria in existence" to require this applicant to agree to build a stealth tower. Now certainly, there's a wave across the country where cities are enacting ordinances where they require some element of stealth design in residential areas. So if you're asking yourself, what would be objective criteria, what I would submit is, if the code had requirements that if a tower was within, whatever it is, so many feet of an R1 property, it shall be stealth, that would be objective criteria in existence by which a city could justify the denial. The request, I believe the request, to build a stealth tower is, to me, it's more aesthetic in nature. I believe it's, it's, we, we might believe that it's, it's more attractive than the steel monopole. So I think it's important, and I don't know how many people have the desire to read the 10th Circuit case that, that I sent out, but it's important, if you look at it, that it specifically addresses aesthetic concerns. The other thing that is, I think, notable is, this case frankly is almost identical to the fact pattern at issue here. It's in a residentially zoned area, it's on a church lot, and I found it interesting to note, at paragraph 19, a similar discussion had to have been had, because they're talking about, the, the tower was denied, and they're talking about aesthetic concerns. And so at paragraph 18, it first says, "Mere generalized concerns regarding aesthetics are insufficient to constitute substantial evidence justifying the denial of an application to construct a wireless telecommunications facility," moving to paragraph 19. However, the unified government's conclusory reference to flatness of the terrain and presence of nearby residential neighborhoods is a classic example of generalized aesthetic concerns. No owners of nearby properties oppose the application or voice their concerns with the tower's aesthetic impact. So, if we look to Wyandotte, it clearly, unequivocally says, "Aesthetic concerns that are general in nature are not means to justify denial of a cell tower application." That is the prevailing law across the Circuit Courts. If we look at Nextel versus Town of Edgewood, and I quote, "It is not reasonable to cite visual or aesthetic concerns without sufficient evidence of meaningful differences in visual impact, aesthetics, safety, or zoning designations." Moving on to Western PCS2 Corp. versus Extraterre, what is it? EVA of the city and county of Santa Fe, "Generalized concerns that facilities might be a visual blight in the neighborhood do not constitute substantial evidence of an aesthetic impact to support denial of a permit application." So, what I would, what I would submit is that there are no objective standards by which to justify a denial of this application if my client did not agree to build a stealth tower. The facts of this case are almost identical to this Wyandotte. Wyandotte cited a few other reasons why they denied it. Those were also rejected by the court. But, in the event that the city believed that there was substantial evidence to justify it, I do want to put on my RF engineer, Romel. If the planning commission would like to hear it, it's also in the materials provided, both through staff and in front of you and the packet you have. What you'll see is my letter, exhibit A, outlining the various legal implications at issue here. B is the RF data that Romel can walk through, if you'd like. C is just an aerialist site that you see there. D are the kind of structural asbills or site plan. E is the ring and the surrounding properties. And finally, F is the RF justification letter presented by T-Mobile indicating their need for the site. This is, again, a capacity issue. We've got a significant gap in the capacity, similar to the previous one, and similar to the one you're going to hear next. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. If you'd like Romel to come and walk through the RF, he is here and able to do so. Are there any questions of me?
Just so we're clear, the application before us is to put up a steel monopole tower.
Yes, sir.
No protests?
Yes, sir.
Nobody's signed up? Just so we set the table for our discussion, commissioners.
I would love, at this point, to just have legal staff kind of give their point of view before we get too far away from what was just said.
Sure. So, our office's position is that this is a special permit, and so if the planning commission and then the city council wanted to impose conditions on the special permit, such as, you know, screening, or anything along those lines, that is within the purview of the commission to do that.
And we disagree. It was a special permit at issue in Wyandotte. It's a special permit, but it's a special permit that's a little different than a normal special permit. The special permit general standards certainly give that right. But what car lots and crematories and other uses that require special permits don't have is the federal government enacting legislation specifically removing certain things that cities can consider when deciding cases such as this. So if, if screening was, was needed in terms of landscaping, that's certainly something that could be considered. But if you're talking about screening the tower itself, we're getting back into aesthetic concerns that has been litigated ad nauseam in favor of the telecom operator every single time that I'm aware of.
David, I hate to get too far into this, but since you cited this paragraph 19, you're saying that, it seems to me to say aesthetic concerns can be, can be considered, just as long as they are grounded in the specifics of the case, such as beautification efforts, neighborhood complaints, the actual character of the immediate neighborhood.
Sure.
In the, in the case you cited, they did not have any such concerns that were expressed, but it seems to imply that if there were such concerns, you could, could find a need for something other than a monopole.
Absolutely. I think the act would absolutely do that. And that, that case supports it. And what it says is, it is, it is permissible ground for denial, this is back in paragraph 18, of a permit under the TCA if substantial evidence of the visual impact of the tower is before the board.
Okay.
And so if there was some study, or some actual substantial evidence of a visual impact, then perhaps a city might be able to succeed. I haven't found the case that a visual impact did it, rather it's, it's case after case after case that these general aesthetic concerns, and the one case that I cited out of Santa Fe, is, you know, the, the claim there was, it actually created a visual blight, and it's general concerns that facilities might be a visual blight in the neighborhood don't constitute substantial evidence of aesthetic impact.
Nobody's signed up?
I don't know of any substantial evidence on my own. Nothing's been presented, and I'm not aware of any on my own. I wouldn't concern.
I've got one, one thing, and I've been told that we'll talk about the majority of this offline, but I do want to make one quick point. It's, to me, this is identical to the Miller neighborhood, item that we had come through, which did have substantial protest. I see that as the main difference. And what I would like to point out in this case is that I believe this to be a majority Latino neighborhood, and I do not believe that when we send out notices, that there's an understanding that they can, there's an understanding of what they are receiving, because we don't provide support for that. So, I don't believe that there's a cultural difference in what they hold important for the areas in which they live. I don't think there's a difference between the people in Miller, the people here. I just think the difference is, there's not an understanding. And my approach in this case was just to say, we did it elsewhere in a neighborhood. I think it's the right thing to do, to do it elsewhere, regardless of the protests. That was it. Anyway.
And perhaps this leads to a different discussion, and perhaps, I mean, the city council sees that this is an important issue, and I think they have every right to go enact an ordinance that requires in residential properties, it should be stealth. But I believe, wholeheartedly, in the absence of that, I don't think you can force it upon developers. And I, and I think, and I think it's a dangerous assumption that they, they didn't, they didn't understand or didn't know they could come down here. We had another case on the bus terminal that was predominantly Hispanic neighborhood, and not only did they understand, but they submitted support letters.
I just, I want to feel good about that being the fact, with us potentially discussing that offline, and what's next in those steps.
I have driven this area, and this commission has approved towers in areas that are much more residential than this area, and I would move approval of this application.
Are you, are you providing any sort of screening on your pole or anything, David?
There, there will be fencing around the mechanical equipment associated with the tower.
That's it? Can I get a tree or two?
Yes.
A little landscaping?
Yes.
That would be very helpful. All right.
I'll second her motion, if you want a minute to include their agreement landscaping at some.
Yeah, we can add it as a TE.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item number 25, and we're going to add requirement for additional landscaping around the, the fencing. Cast your votes. That item's approved.
And on to 26 is SP 508, the telecommunication tower special permit at 520 South MacArthur Boulevard.
Again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, on behalf of the applicant, it is a different applicant. It is a T-Mobile site, so I do have Romel here, again, on behalf of T-Mobile, to talk about the RF data. But we do have a different site act specialist, if you so desire to hear it. This is a bit different in that its location is not in a residential area. Ms. Lincoln, if you'd go to the, go to the aerial that the city sent out. If you look at our location here, we are along I-40, east of South MacArthur, in the Golden Corral parking lot. Get this pulled up real quick. Okay, there we go. So again, telecom tower, it's again a capacity issue for T-Mobile. All of the relevant RF data is before you, both the materials provided to staff and in the, the second binder we've given you. I would like those binders back, they're expensive, and I'd like to use them again in city council, but be that as it may. This one is in, again, it's a parking lot along an interstate. There is a TE asking for additional landscaping that we do agree to. I'm, again, not aware of any protests that exists on this one. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and be happy to put on all of our data, if you'd like to hear it.
Prepared.
Nobody's signed up?
No protests?
No protests. Anybody here to speak on item 26? Okay, Christie.
I'll make a motion to approve. It had one TE, right?
The landscaping. That's right.
Subject to the one TE.
Okay. Motion is second to approve item number 26. Cast your votes. That item's approved.
Item 27 was previously heard. Item 28 is PUD 1692 to rezone 5800 Southwest 149 from AA to PUD 1692.
David Box, 504 Northwest 15th Street, here on behalf.
Oh, it's 522.
I just want to see if anybody paid attention. Yes. 522 Call Core Drive. I'll take notice of both, please. This, this is a bit of a unique application in that the use that we seek to do through this, this PUD is a use that's permitted today under a special permit. So, if you look at where we are, it's Southwest 149th and South MacArthur, so it's right here. MacArthur dies about a half mile south of our site into the South, South Canadian River. So what we're doing in this general area is mining sand. This lake was dredged of sand to create this lake. Again, we're actively mining and operating in this area. I have the operators here with me, if you want to hear the technical details of what it is we're doing. But I think it's important to note, again, that the use of mining and processing is permitted today under special permit. The only issue that we seek to amend of that with this PUD is, we like the ability to do this 24 hours. We don't think it'll take up a, a large portion, but because some of the sand could potentially be used in the oil field, when people drill wells, they drill wells at whatever time they happen to be called. So, we do need the ability to, to have 24 hours. So if we think about what's, what is the analysis of a 24-hour use, it's typically, what is the impact going to be to neighboring properties? So I had Jason Spencer create this image to show you the, the heavy industrialized nature of this area. We don't believe we'll be disturbing anybody with the 24-hour nature of the use, because again, if you look at it, it's, there's a lot of heavy industrial users already operating in this area.
Just, so, where are you guys?
We are right here.
Right there.
That, just that little, so that's the only piece that we're seeking to, you know, add this ability to have 24 hours.
Yeah, just to clarify too, because I spoke with Mr. Box about this case, so the little corner is just a, it's a smaller piece of their larger operation.
Right.
And it's just that little piece that they're seeking to exclude from the hours of operation. It's not the entirety of the mining operation, it's this trucking operation where they load and unload sand, right? I'm still, okay.
And some processing.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the rest of it will still remain with the same limitations that exist today. So there is a handful of TEs that I'd like to address. First, TE 1, 3, and 5, we do agree to. TE 4 is the out, the staff is asking for an hours of operation limitation. Again, that's why we're here, so we can't agree to that. And finally, TE 2 asks that the maximum driveway width not exceed 30 feet unless otherwise approved by the city engineer, and we can't agree to that. What we've asked for is 60 feet, and so this is, if you see what we're doing here, the reason we need something wider is the nature of the trucks that we've got. They're bigger. But what we intend to do is when they pull in off South MacArthur, they will never have to back up. They're able to turn in, do whatever it is they do, and if you'd like to hear that, they're here, and then pull back out onto 149th Street. So one of the questions we met with Ms. Coffey and Ms. Powers was, one of the things that sometimes is an annoyance in these uses is the beeping of a truck backing up. The way the site is designed, we don't anticipate a truck ever needing to back up. Now, perhaps one might, but the way it is designed is to send everybody flowing through. We did have some preliminary discussions with Debbie Miller and Public Works about our driveway width. We didn't immediately understand her to have problems with the 60-foot width, but we're happy to continue that discussion. But we do believe we need the 60 feet, and we're happy to, you know, agree that we'll have to continue to work with the city engineer to make sure that they are in agreement with what we need. Yes, sir?
The city engineer can approve this one?
The rezoning?
No, the driveway width. It was the director of Public Works on another one. Who's approving these things?
Well, city engineer is the director of Public Works.
Okay.
Eric Winger is the director of Public Works, and I think by definition is the city engineer.
Is there, are there other city engineers?
There are. You've got Debbie Miller.
And how many of those can approve the change in driveway width administratively?
Boy, I'd have to defer to some level of staff I'm not aware of.
I'm just curious. I'll get an answer to this later. I'm just curious.
My understanding of the process is Mr. Winger has, you know.
Oversight.
Oversight, but a hierarchy of other engineers that perhaps can approve things of this nature. I don't know. But we're happy to work with them, but we can't agree to 30. We believe 60 is the number. Again, we had some early discussions with Public Works, specifically Debbie Miller, and it wasn't our impression that she had big concerns based upon the unique nature, based upon the size of trucks, et cetera, for this site.
Your amendment is shall not exceed 60 feet.
Yes. So I would.
Subject to approval of Public Works or the city engineer or appropriate.
Whoever takes the phone call back.
Appropriate.
Yes. So I would say we agree to 1. We'd ask to modify 2.
Right.
To 30 to 60.
Delete 4.
We agree to 3, delete 4, agree to 5.
All right. Somebody, we have somebody signed up for this application. Ms. Bogart? Bogart? I knew if I said it one way, it'd be the other.
Yes, my name is Kathy Bogart. I live at 15501 South MacArthur. I live south of where they're proposing that. General Materials is our neighbor on down further from us, and I do have a problem with trucks coming in there 24 hours a day. I have a problem with the road, period. I have a horse trailer that has living quarters on it, twice going down 149th. The road has got so bad since Materials have moved their location down at the end of MacArthur that the, has come loose, the rear axles have came loose for my trailer. Now, the road right now is impassable. I can't get down it in a Ford Escape. I have to come down up to 134th and come down MacArthur. So once I get to MacArthur, the gravel and the stuff that the city put on there, General Materials, their sodgrass farm operator decided, "Oh, we need that gravel up against our fence to keep the water from going over their sod farm and when it rains." And I have a picture of the, one of the holes. This is on MacArthur right now, and we've called the city. We've called them every day. They do not come out and repair this road. Now, we're wanting to bring heavier trucks on that road, and nobody wants to keep it up. On MacArthur, from the trucks coming in front of my house, I have to use an inhaler every day because of the dust. I call the city, ask them if they could control the dust. No, we can't. You'll have to talk to General Materials. They have all the equipment. I asked them, and they said, "No, that's city. They have to take care of it." So nobody takes care of it. So our road is in terrible shape, and when you bring these heavier trucks in here 24 hours a day, we're not going to be able to get in and out. I live down there. I've lived there for a long time. We've owned the property since the early 80s. We've not lived there all that time, but I've lived there for 25-plus years right now, and I've seen the road in great shape, and I've seen it worse. Right now is probably the worst I've seen it, and nobody wants to take care of it. I have a problem with the commission, with this group wanting to allow more stuff in there and not take care of the roads. You know, I don't want them working 24 hours a day up and down the road. We have trouble with people coming out there as it is, all times of the night, up and down the road, and it's a dead-end road. We have a gate at the end of past their operation to keep people from going down on the river. You just, there's just too much stuff goes on. I just don't want to see it running 24 hours a day out there. If they want to limit it, their time since they come in, that's fine. But I want somebody to be responsible for this road, and if it's a city road, I want the city to take care of it before they allow more trucks coming in on this, especially heavy trucks.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Bogart?
Just one. Ms. Bogart, your property is the one that's shown right there at the bottom of the screen. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm at the very bottom with the loop.
With the kind of the turnarounds and all that?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Box, any comments to Ms. Bogart's concerns?
It's our understanding that her property is currently operating, what my client tells me is that there is a group called Cherokee Sand that is currently operating on her property. I don't know if it's her or someone else, but likewise with large trucks contributing to perhaps a road problem. It is a public road. I mean, it is a city street, but.
It is the city's obligation to maintain the road.
But it is our understanding that there is a current operation similar in nature there. But, so if we get back to our site.
What's the point of your, how far down MacArthur from, meaning how far off the corner there is your drive? Do you come, are you primarily enter this from the south or from the north?
From the north. About 300 feet, and that was the point I was going to make. So this is going to be, the only 24-hour nature is not going to be south where she is.
Right, I understand.
It's going to be coming off of 149th, looping in and back out.
How much of this truck traffic already exists today?
Why don't you come up?
Hi there. Jade Lemon with General Materials Incorporated, the operator right here at 149th and MacArthur. And there's probably close to 150 to 200 N dump dump trucks, which is regular traffic on a daily count.
But I'm saying, is this about, is this increasing the amount of traffic within the operation, or is this just changing how the operation operates? I mean, are you really increasing trucks here, or are you just funneling them to a site so you can get this stuff out?
Some of both.
It's some of both?
Potentially. It could increase.
Okay.
But not south of that drive?
South of that drive actually will decrease some of the truck traffic. We expect most of the traffic in that area to come off of I-44. Comes west on 149th currently, and it turns south on MacArthur. And we expect some of that existing traffic to divert to this terminal, just because the truckload-out facility that we're talking about doing will ease, it'll make more efficient delivery of the materials.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll split the information that David brought up. Ms. Bogart, this question would be for you, unless you don't want to come answer, but he said you, your biggest complaint was truck traffic, but he said you have an operation with truck traffic, or you're leasing to someone that does? So you actually have the truck going?
Actually, we have Cherokee sand. We probably have 20 trucks coming in. It didn't increase anymore. What it did, it shuffled from, if you raise it up to 149th right there, it shuffled it up from the Butler pit, that other special permit. That's also a sand permit right there.
Just making sure, the exact complaint you have.
Is our road and the heaviness of these trucks. We have 10-yard trucks. You're talking about 20 yards plus on these roads.
The same, the same issue, though, is trucks, and you are contributing to it.
We do have some trucks. Yes, we do.
Want to make sure I understand.
Yes, but nothing like they have. I also would like to put in there that when I do dishes at my kitchen window and I look out, I don't really like seeing their truck drivers on the side of the road putting their tarp over and using the bathroom. I can see that out of my house, and they're not supposed to be doing that, so just FYI.
Citizenship issue, Dave.
What's that?
Citizenship issue there.
We will talk to staff.
If there's no further protest reasons, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve.
Nobody else has signed up. Is there anybody else here to speak on item 28?
Okay, I guess I should make sure I get it right, though. Which TEs? So you said strike 4 altogether, but there was some limitation on hours on some part of the operation? Is that right? Is it clear somewhere else?
No, we, the rest of the.
It's subject to hours of operation. It's just this little carve-out that will not be.
Right. Okay. So we have strike 4.
Strike 4.
Modify.
Modify 2 to be 60 feet?
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion to approve with exactly that. TE 4 struck and TE 2 modified to be 60 foot.
Subject to approval by the CNG whoever.
City engineer?
Yes. Staff?
Yes.
Okay. Motion second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve item 28 as condition. Cash your votes. It's approved.
Thank you.
I think, I think Mary has to leave. Mary has to leave at this point. Anybody need a break? Move on. Okay. Okay, item 29, PUD 1690 to rezone 2509 South Tulsa Avenue from R1 to PUD 1690.
Yes, Mason Schwartz. That's not David Box, but it is the same address, 522 Callcore Drive. This is a PUD on Southwest.
Are you just trying to break up the presentation a little bit?
Yeah.
Is that what this is? Just like, yeah.
Exactly right. This is a PUD on Southwest 29th and Tulsa. This property is currently zoned R1. It's been used for a soccer field complex, a number of different fields and goals out there. Our client just seeks to continue his operation as a soccer field complex, and he likes to continue running leagues on Saturdays, soccer leagues, men's leagues for the most part. We went to staff to make sure that that was the right zoning that we needed. It was R1. Staff's position was if it was just casual recreational leagues that we're not charging some sort of entry fee, it could be considered accessory perhaps to R1, but because our client doesn't want to charge league dues, league entry fees, it triggers the community recreational use unit for a soccer complex. So what we're.
And you're not talking about interest fees as it relates to people coming onto the property during an event. You're talking about to participate in the soccer league itself.
Correct. $50 per season fee, per player. So that's what we're here for. We are keeping zoning R1. We are adding in the community recreational use units, limited to a soccer complex, adding in a food and beverage retail use unit, limited to an accessory snack stand, just in case they want to put a small brick building and sell Gatorades and those kind of items out there on the fields. We did have a protest slash request for continuance that came in earlier this week, was from the property to the south. There's been some drainage concerns between the two properties. We got with those individuals yesterday and got a solution in place for how they can work together to fix some of the drainage issues. So they have, as of, I think, later this morning, withdrawn their protest slash continuance request. So with that being said, I am not aware of any other protests. Happy to answer any questions, and we ask for your approval.
Any question for Mason?
I have two. What's the definition of a snack stand?
Well, I'm not sure if I can define it for you exactly right here, but I can tell you what the accessory use would be having in mind, something small, brick, operation, selling Gatorades, selling waters.
I guess staff doesn't have concerns over that loose of a term being defined. I mean, I.
It will have to be clearly accessory to the, this main soccer use. You could impose a size limit, square footage. Does that make you feel more comfortable?
I've just not seen that terminology before, so I wasn't sure what a snack stand was. One other question that I have is of staff is just, the issue is the hard surface paving not being required. The concern, what is the concern with not having hard surface there? I mean.
We really don't have a concern with it. The Board of Adjustment approved it several years ago, and it's been operating like that ever since. The Board, for some reason, approved it with a time limit, and it expired.
Okay.
That's another reason they're here today.
Sure, and with the drainage issue, I don't think our client or the neighbors have any desire to put any more concrete in there at the moment, so.
Yeah. Well, that's my point. That would make it worse.
Sure.
I mean, yeah. Okay.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval to city council on PUD 1690.
Second.
Motion is second to approve item 29. Cash your votes. It's approved.
Thank you.
We have previously heard items 30, 31, and 32, so item 33 is an ordinance for public hearing, providing a recommendation on creating a new urban design subdistrict for the Lincoln Boulevard corridor. This was introduced in the last meeting, so this is the public hearing and recommendation, and Michael Philbrick was going to, for the purpose of the community, walk through the Lincoln Boulevard overlay proposal.
Can you go to the next slide? Presentation, David, will provide you with the overview of the proposed ordinance amendment, including a look at the proposed overlay district boundary, the purpose behind the proposal of the overlay district, and a review covering the major points of the proposed development regulations, design guidelines. Next slide. Lincoln Boulevard corridor overlay is proposed as a new urban design district that would be subject to review by the Urban Design Commission, similar to developments in Northwest 23rd Street corridor, Capitol Hill, and the Plaza District. The proposed boundary is generally defined by Northeast 30th Street on the south and Central Park Drive at north near Interstate 44. The boundary is focused primarily on include all the parcels at front on North Lincoln Boulevard, and the depth of the district is determined primarily by the depth of the existing C3 zoning along the west side of the street and the depth of the parcels at front on Lincoln Boulevard on the east side of the street. The boundary was also adjusted to exclude all existing PUD and SPUD designations, all adjacent R1 zoning, and specifically crafted so as to avoid splitting buildings or parcels. The boundary has been refined over the past 12 months, but the focus has always been to provide direction over development that is directly oriented toward the Lincoln Boulevard corridor. Legal description for this version of the proposed overlay boundary is included in the body of the draft ordinance amendment. Next slide. The catalyst for the proposal of this ordinance amendment was the state as a major landowner of properties within the Lincoln Boulevard corridor, the potential for new development and/or land sales. In the coming years, the state was concerned about having design protections in place that would ensure high-quality design within the corridor. City staff collaborated with the state to develop a work plan for this effort. The objectives behind this effort were laid out for you here and consist of promoting an appropriate mix of uses that are comparable with the capital, creating a vibrant urban corridor, implementing design guidelines appropriate to the area, integration of pedestrian friendly access, enduring high quality, ensuring high-quality aesthetics in the development of projects within the corridor, and enhancing existing neighborhoods by encouraging reinvestment in real sites. Next slide. The proposed ordinance amendment would accomplish the following. It would add Lincoln Boulevard corridor as the urban, as a urban design district, establish new development regulations and design guidelines tailored specifically for the corridor, modify uses. tailored specifically for the corridor, modify uses that are presently allowed in the existing base zoning districts, and adopt development standards that recognize existing conditions in order to minimize non-conforming structures. Next slide. So there's going to be some changes that would affect the use regulations that are existing out there today. Many of the existing uses that are allowed in the current base zoning districts, such as the ones displayed here for you, would continue to be allowed. Next slide. There are, however, a number of uses that are currently allowed within the existing base zoning districts that are believed to be incompatible with the image the city would like to project on a major arterial corridor that leads to the state Capitol. These uses listed on this slide are examples of some of the uses that are currently allowed but would be eliminated within the corridor. To our knowledge, none of these uses exist within the proposed overlay district boundary, and therefore, no new non-conforming uses would be created by this change. Next slide. As far as development regulations are concerned, we're looking at new regulations within the corridor that would supersede the regulations of the C3 and I-2 base zoning districts that exist there today. These regulations would impact minimum building height, maximum building height, front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, and sidewalks, signs, parking lots, service areas, and utility screening and fences. Next slide. This is an example of one of the primary regulations that would be a significant change in the area. Currently, there are a number of businesses that do allow or do have existing parking lots in front of the buildings facing Lincoln Boulevard. One of the objectives of this overlay is to encourage development of parking lots to the sides or rears of the buildings that face Lincoln. Next slide. We are also proposing new regulations for signage. One of the primary changes is we are proposing a list of new prohibited sign types. The two upper versions would be signs that would be allowed under the new regulations. The sign down in the lower right corner would be an example of a sign that would be prohibited under the new regulations. We also have new fence regulations being proposed. These three samples here shown in the photos would be sign types, or, excuse me, fence types that would be allowed under the new regulations. And we talked about here on the left, some of the regulations that talk about prohibited materials under the urban design district. For design guidelines, we would have guidelines new established in this area for development pattern, pedestrian circulation and amenities, demolitions, fences, building design, parking and vehicular access, building materials, and relationship to surrounding development. Next slide. So for development pattern, we're focusing on having buildings more directly oriented toward the street of Lincoln Boulevard in this case, with less emphasis on a suburban development pattern dominated by parking lots. So you have an example on the left that we're trying to accomplish, and an example on the right of what we're trying to avoid. For building design, we're looking at encouraging designs that are geared more towards encouraging active pedestrian movement along the corridor with attractive streetscapes that are not focused on the automobile. So again, on the left, you have an example of what we're trying to encourage with these guidelines, and then on the right, an example of what we're trying to discourage. For pedestrian circulation and amenities, we're just looking at being focused on creating a pedestrian-friendly environment, and similar to some of the sections that you have out there right now between Northeast 30th and up to about Northeast 36th Street, and we're hoping to be able to continue some of those treatments north of Northeast 36. We also have regulations regarding parking and vehicular access. We're talking about trying to encourage fewer drive cuts on Lincoln Boulevard with more access from the side streets when available, and sharing driveways if at all possible. For demolition, there are a few structures out there that are fairly old and significant from an architectural design standpoint, so we will be simply incorporating the demolition provisions that we already have in place in the urban design district to apply within the corridor. And then with building materials, we're looking for projects that would be established to ensure higher-quality materials and enhanced detailing with distinction between materials and more of a broken-up facade rather than a uniform material or presence facade on the street. That pretty much concludes our presentation with respect to the new standards and guidelines that will be brought forth with this overlay district. Prepare to respond to any questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Michael. Commissioners, you have any questions, Michael? We've spent a lot of time on this, done a good job getting this gathered up. It's been a little contentious at times, but I appreciate the effort that you and your staff and all of you have put in on this. I think it's a great idea, frankly, to clean up that gateway going down to the Capitol. So personally, I think this is a step in the right direction. So we just need to approve this, right? Or you have anything else on this? Would anybody like to speak on this? Come up, Sharon.
Hi, I'm Sharon Strickland, and I'm vice president of the Thompson Woodlands neighborhood. It's located from Lincoln to Kelly and from 50th to 42nd. So we... Woodland Park runs on the northwest side of our neighborhood. Carolyn, who's with me, there are estates that face the park along there, and we are concerned about the traffic coming off 42nd and from Woodland Drive off Lincoln. The workers at rush hour cut through there to avoid the 50th and Lincoln intersection and whiz through, and it is a park. So if we try to get more of the traffic on the east and west, that would increase the traffic along there and on 50th. As it is, we can't exit our neighborhoods during rush hour. We cannot safely... We can't actually turn left onto Lincoln going out west on Woodland Drive. So there's the traffic issue in the park, and Mr. Filbrick took some time to visit with us that the overlay does not include the park. We couldn't really tell from the map, so that's good. And our other question was, because we love the plan and getting it to a higher level along Lincoln Avenue, and we'd need more services in our area, just wondering, and we talked about why it stops at 50th on the east side of Lincoln, why not continue that same level of building codes and signage, et cetera, on that side? And as Mr. Filbrick said, the topography is very different in there. There's a cliff, but even so, it would be to our advantage and to the advantage of the gateway to the Capitol if the same standards applied for anything that does go in on that east side in that district that there's a PUD request on right now.
Do you all want me to respond to that? This was a topic of previous study sessions, and we did look at that and evaluate that segment of the corridor. Part of our policy in establishing this overlay was to only include office and commercially zoned properties and not residentially zoned properties. That piece of land is currently residentially zoned, and because of the topography issues and where you would actually be able to start doing or impacting the corridor with things that you could visibly see, it did lend itself to having less impact on the purpose of doing the overlay district. So for those reasons, we started the overlay on the south side of 50th Street. And there is a PUD, an active case to rezone that property at this time. So until we can hear that case, we know that these guidelines are in place, and that developer has been in touch with the city about what we're proposing, and is incorporating a lot of the standards from this proposed overlay into that rezoning. So it's going to be addressed either way. It just didn't fit the parameters.
We're involved, of course, in the negotiations on the PUDs, so that's where we need to concentrate then on and bring back. The other thing is, we're Ward 7. We have no representation, and it seems unfortunate to me that decisions are being made like this in our ward without a representative. So I would just beg each of you to consider our ward, your ward, and consider all the residences around that area, because it's just beautiful neighborhoods.
Wonderful.
With all the indigenous trees, and we all have usually one to five acres in our neighborhood. Some might go to half acre. So we want to preserve the wildlife, et cetera, and not obliterate that corner and not, you know, reduce the standards on that side of Lincoln.
So Sharon, you take access back up to Lincoln, excuse me, from Woodland or from 42nd?
Woodland.
Woodland.
It's difficult from 42nd, too. And you may be aware that there's a large hill on 50th, so turning left off of Woodland is hard.
Right.
And if we go down 49th, which is in horrible shape, full of holes and mud usually at the bottom, to turn left onto Kelly, that's hard. It's just really hard to get out of our neighborhood or into it for that matter during rush hour already.
Yeah, I'm well aware of... I never thought that that traffic backed up. I guess it does when the Capitol lets out at around 4:20.
Especially when they're in session.
To 4:20 to, say, 5:00, pretty much those hours. Is that when it's pretty bad?
Till about 6:00.
Really?
4:00 to 6:00.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions or comments about the plan?
You waited an awful long time, so please, yeah, we're...
I'm sorry?
You waited an awful long time to make your comment.
They're important to us.
You want to come up? We got to get you... So you can be a television star.
She did a good job of expressing the concerns, but...
State your name, please.
Carolyn Messick.
Thank you.
And I actually... See, my house on that map, I face that park. And, you know, Woodland Drive, where it goes onto Lincoln, is just... The cars just race down, going 40 miles an hour to escape that traffic, and people are walking. There's a park, you know. It's really dangerous.
So they turn on Woodland at 5 o'clock when they're going west on Lincoln? They turn on Woodland, go west over to 50th, and cut back to Kelly?
Yeah, because they want to avoid the 50th and Lincoln intersection, so they shoot down our road to 50th.
Yeah, okay.
If I could maybe make a recommendation to you, since this zoning overlay isn't going to impact traffic...
Yeah.
Maybe you all could reach out to the Public Works Department Traffic Division?
Yeah.
And there's a process for requesting certain things, traffic counts, and they can look at a study, and if traffic is backing up and speeds, and they could address that through the Traffic Commission.
Okay.
And the Public Works Department has a traffic division that you could speak to about these concerns.
And you do have a Ward 7 representative, not at this commission presently, but Lee Cooper, who was the Ward 7 planning commissioner, is there. So if you wanted assistance or information, you could certainly reach out to him as well. We're just a recommending body.
That's right. Commissioners, action on this?
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak on this? Item 33.
If not, I'll recommend approval to City Council. Second.
Motion is second to approve item 33. Send it on to council. Cast your votes. It's approved.
And item 34 is the, excuse me, is the zoning that goes along with the creation of this district.
So this is just a... This would be a recommendation as well, then?
Recommendation to rezone, correct?
Okay. So I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council for the rezoning of PC 10541.
Second.
Motion is second to approve item number 34. Cast your votes. That item is approved.
We have no further items on the agenda, at least for this part.
For additional items, planning commission committees, we don't have any, I don't believe, planning commission members.
I would just say one thing on the cell tower issue. I think it would be good if someone could suggest that the council look at, someone in city staff, look at these ordinances a little bit. I read the case. I'm embarrassed to admit to you, I read that case line by line. There are a lot of things I think the city could do to prevent there from being big steel monopoles, if that's an issue people are genuinely concerned about. There are some things in these cases that ring true that are kind of interesting. One is that they're building them at 90 feet tall. The reason they're doing that is so they don't have to allow co-location. So how many of these poles do you want to see?
Yep.
Another thing that's kind of interesting is that the visual aesthetic, I think, from reading the case, could be regulated if the city council would just adopt an ordinance that required them to be that way.
Yep.
And I think that's for the betterment of the neighborhoods. I think ASA had some good points there. I think that we're not equipped. I didn't need to hear the RF study. It doesn't matter. I can't refute it. So it's worthless to hear it. It's a pretty compromising position to be in when you're going to, you know, rule on cases like that that affect people's neighborhoods. So I just would add those comments.
I think that... And I talked to David about that very point when he and I were debating this, and I think the issue is, and I think he would agree, that if the council put the... Took the time, and we had the ordinance back up for that particular stealth, whatever, aesthetics, et cetera, that we had something to point to, which was missing, and I think is still missing in us. But I'd like a sign ordinance, too, so we're not spending hours on signs. So that's another part of our wish list. But, yeah, these are going to be... We're going to have a bunch, because capacity's getting chewed up.
Yeah, and I think the one we heard a couple weeks ago was a door knocker. So I think we're going to see a whole bunch, and I think you're going to see a whole bunch at 90 feet, which is, in my view, that's a major problem, so.
Okay. Next is Planning Department. Oh, no comment. Development Services. Municipal Council. Citizens to be heard. Other business. Motion to adjourn? All right. We're adjourned. Thank you.